I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Brezja.
Present.
Ms. Miles.
Present.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Breeden. Mr. Amun.
Here.
Thank you. Chair Seberg. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Welcome to everybody here tonight and it's good to see everybody up here too. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda, Dr. Newman?
No ma'am.
Can I get approval for the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agendas presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the School Board, the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. We don't have any board committee reports tonight since we haven't had any committee meetings, standing committee meetings since our last business meeting. So I will go to public comments. And up first I have Anna Di Maria.
Alright, good evening, School Board members, Superintendent Newman, so I am Anna Di Maria. I am the extremely proud president of the Manassas Education Association. In attendance also is our Vice President Maggie Connors, our Secretary Tammy De Haven, and the, our VEA Board Member, Shanniqua Williams. So I just came to speak today to advocate for making November 4th the Professional Development Day an asynchronous work from your preferred location day. It is Election Day. Election Day has become extremely contentious over the past few years. Fairfax County had an election, a special election today, and their schools were closed. The kids were not there, just like ours aren't. But they also had their staff not in the building. They were able to work from an alternate location. I think it's important that we treat our staff with the same respect, that we keep their safety in mind, just like we do with our students. And we also teach our students every day about civics and citizenship. And I think by making our parking lots accessible to voters, that shows that. I think by giving our staff the flexibility to vote when they can exemplifies citizenship. And while we do have like early voting and mail-in voting, there are still barriers with that. I just recently learned that in Prince William County, if you're a resident in Prince William County, you have to vote at the old city hall, or the old courthouse until like October 13th. So not everybody lives in a small city like Manassas. Most of our staff don't live in Manassas City. So I just hope that you take that into consideration as a thought for our staff and also for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Di Maria. Do we have anybody else signed up, Alba? Okay. Moving along to our discussion agenda this evening, facilities and maintenance? Oh, consent agenda, sorry.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. On our discussion agenda tonight, we have, facilities and maintenance, Jenny Dean, the new Jenny Dean Elementary Construction Update, Mr. Kefeller.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. This month, I just was here last time giving you the July update on the construction of the new Jenny Dean Elementary School, and I'm now here to give you an update on the progress that was made in August. So this, this past month, I am pleased to share that continued progress is on the construction of the new Jenny Dean is on time and on budget. On the site itself, underground utility work has been moving forward on schedule. The team is also prepared to site for the installation of the underground stormwater retention chamber. And this system is a key part of the project's commitment to sustainability, and it will reduce runoff and support both environmental and economic goals, most importantly. And it is, all of our inspections are compliant and on schedule, so nothing has been hanging up the progress of our construction. Inside the building, the masonry crews have continued to make steady progress on the vertical and structural bearing walls. Structural steel materials have been delivered, and the steel erection began in August. The mechanical, electrical, and plumbing roughens are also underway at the site. The piping and conduit are being installed throughout the walls and to the ceilings. The current construction priorities are the administrative wing, the gymnasium, and the kitchen. And the walls in these areas are scheduled for their first completion with the roofing work to follow the steel installation, and I'll show you a picture of the steel installation here in a moment. From a project management, as I said, I'm happy to report that we are, our overall schedule is on track. Our budget remains on budget as well. There's an average of about 100 workers onsite each day. And so if you go over there, you will see significant progress that's being made on the, the building. Finally, the coordination with the existing Jenny Dean Elementary School continues to go well. The contractor has demonstrated a strong commitment to maintaining safety and ensuring that the operations at the current school are not disrupted. And so at the next meeting that we have in October, I will bring you, in addition to the September update of the construction, I will also be bringing you an update on the outdoor learning spaces and how they will be used at the new Jenny Dean Elementary School. And I will also bring you an update on the Osborne Connector, which that product also is, remains on time and on budget. So with that, just a few pictures that you'll see. If you drive over to the Jenny Dean site, you will see significant progress that has been made with the walls. Here, last time I talked about the crane and the putting in the roof and the steels, the steel trusses. You will see that as you drive up to the building. It's looking more like a school. And so you'll see the, the large footprint of the wall construction that's happening over there at the site. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Spall?
Um, yes. I was gonna make this a Facebook post, but I wasn't sure if it was insensitive, so I'll just say it to a smaller group, but I saw workers working there on Saturday, and I can tell that people are really committed to remaining on time and on budget. They were on the roof. And so I appreciate that. And I also would like to say that after all of the back and forth, I was with the city councilmen who said, "I really like that the building is front and center and not off to where they originally wanted to put it." So I would say, "All systems go," and thank you for the reports.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kefeller. Next up under personnel, we have an update from Ms. Katie Fisher, Executive Director of Human Resources, and Ms. Erica Loesch, Director of Professional Learning. An update on staffing and professional learning, thank you.
Yes, good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the School Board, Dr. Newman. I'm happy to be here this evening to provide a brief update on human resources in partnership with Erica Loesch, who will provide an update on professional learning. These two departments work hand in hand as we prepare to kick off each school year. The combined work of human resources and professional learning is grounded in the priorities identified within the Quality Workforce pillar. It is critical that we recruit high-quality staff, provide opportunities for professional learning, support staff growth, and ensure accountability along the way through the use of regular feedback and goal setting. A key component to ensuring we have a quality workforce is recruitment and retention. As you can see on this slide, the retention rate from the 24-25 school year is the highest it has been in the past four years. The 86% reflects the percentage of teachers that remained in Manassas City. This number does not take into account retirements or terminations, but it does reflect the number of classroom teachers that chose to stay with Manassas City Public Schools. Teachers that remained with Manassas City but were trans, but transitioned to different positions or transferred schools are included in the retention rate as they remain teachers within the division. The human resources team worked diligently over the summer to go through all applicants, assist in setting up interviews with administrators, and attended a job fair in Quantico for military spouses to fill as many remaining vacancies as we could. We focused on expediting the hiring process by pre-screening applicants and ensuring reference checks before recommending candidates for interviews with our administrators. These efforts enabled us to fill almost all classroom vacancies prior to the start of the school year. When preparing this presentation, and currently, we, we currently have three classroom vacancies that are being filled by permanent substitutes or long-term substitutes. We are working very closely with school administrators to fill these vacancies and anticipate them being filled in the very near future. Our focus on quality workforce drives our work throughout the year. While we just wrapped up our main hiring season, recruiting efforts are always underway. We recently kicked off a campaign that highlights the tagline, "Join MCPS where your purpose has a place." We look forward to leveraging these graphics to market vacancies to a broader audience through social media and other platforms. As we plan ways to continually attract potential candidates to Manassas City, it is critical that we develop and support our current staff. Ms. Loesch will speak more about the opportunities that we provide to staff in order to develop their skills. In human resources, I do want to highlight something that we're launching this year as a, as a way to continue to track our teachers towards their pathway to licensure. So we are finalizing a dashboard for each school that informs administrators of what the teachers within their building are working towards in order to obtain licensure so that we can support them in reaching that goal. Human resources also supports leaders with the implementation of the evaluation process. We currently have evaluation processes in place for administrators, support staff, counselors, and teachers. The evaluation processes, as designed, provide a structured way for supervisors to provide feedback, set goals, and evaluate staff in alignment to standards relevant to their roles. All three of these components on the screen, when done successfully, should lead to retention rates that continue to increase, which will ensure all students get to benefit from a high-quality workforce across all schools and departments. There are many factors that contribute to retention, which sometimes makes it difficult to pinpoint one or two main contributing factors. When there were stay interviews conducted last year, the main common answers as to why people want to stay in Manassas City were support from administration, team, their team and colleagues, and the community. We look forward to conducting stay interviews throughout the year to pinpoint additional reasons why staff choose to stay here in Manassas City so that we can highlight those and continue to grow on those. We are hopeful that continuing to focus on the areas that are within the control of Human Resources Department, that we will lead to continual increased retention. So with that, I am now going to turn it over to our Director of Professional Learning, Ms. Erica Loesch.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, Dr. Newman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share a professional learning update with you all today. So we offer a number of different professional learning opportunities throughout the year, and our professional learning calendar kicks off with New Administrator Academy. New Administrator Academy is an onboarding experience intended to help ensure our new school-based administrators are supported and better prepared for success. All new to Manassas City Public Schools administrators, regardless of previous experience, are included in New Administrator Academy. The goal of New Administrator Academy is to ensure our new administrators have the supports to successfully acclimate to their new roles within Manassas City. Even our experienced, new-to-us administrators have greatly benefited from this professional learning opportunity because through this opportunity, they learn the MCPS way. Our new administrator orientation is the kickoff to this induction program. Throughout this three-day event, division leaders hosted sessions for our new school-based administrators that introduced a variety of content that is critical to supporting their role as a Manassas City school leader. I want to thank these division leaders for the warm welcome they provided to our new administrators. Throughout the year, our new school-based administrators engage in monthly learning sessions designed to provide timely support so they can successfully complete aspects of their role. And while there are focus areas scheduled throughout the year, we do build the sessions to be responsive to what our new administrators need, gathering feedback directly from them throughout the year. New Administrator Academy is built into our leadership professional learning calendar, and all new administrators are expected to participate. This year, 114 division leaders came together for our annual leadership retreat. This is hosted at Sweeney Barn, and division leaders received updates on the strategic plan. They had an opportunity to reflect upon what was successful last year and identified new considerations for this year. Teams began their continuous improvement planning for the 25-26 school year, and the leadership retreat just sets the stage for that continuous improvement planning, which does continue more in-depth following the leadership retreat. Additionally, during the leadership retreat, updates were provided to instructional leaders on co-teaching and behavior support system, which is our division's focus areas for the 25-26 school year. Opportunities to reflect on oneself as a leader and build connections with others across the division was embedded, were embedded as well. Jump Start was a full-day program designed to help those entering the education field acquire the foundational skills that are necessary for success. The instructional cycle, Plan, Instruct, Assess, was the focus, and practical tools teachers can use day one were provided. Just over 70 new teachers were invited, and our professional growth specialists hosted 59 new teachers at our first Jump Start on Friday, July 25th. This was an optional program because it began before new teacher contracts started. It's exciting that about 80% of our new teachers accepted this invitation. The teacher, the teacher education and mentoring or team program is designed to develop, retain, and support high-performing teachers working for Manassas City Public Schools. This program is designed to focus on all teachers new to the division, and our professional growth coaches and specialists lead this work with our team teachers. New Teacher Academy is the kickoff event of our team program. This four-day event welcomed 113 new teachers to Manassas City Public Schools. And during New Teacher Academy, our new teachers began networking and building relationships with others, explored creating a classroom environment focused on collaboration, engaged in the Kagan Cooperative Learning Day One Workshop, participated in a variety of activities that helped create an effective classroom environment through proactive classroom management, and learned about the instructional planning process and explored instructional resources available. Our special education teachers also discussed how to manage their caseloads while learning more about IEPs, online platforms, and other related resources on how to set up their classrooms for success. Now, team teachers will partner with their mentors and assigned professional growth coach or specialist to engage in ongoing professional learning tailored towards their specific needs. This year's convocation was hosted on August 1st. This energetic event brings together the entire Manassas City Public Schools family in the Osborne Auditorium to celebrate each other, reflect on our accomplishments, and set the focus for the upcoming year. This year's video centered on student voices. And our very own food services baked our sweet treat, which was generously sponsored by the Manassas Education Foundation. A key priority in Manassas City Public Schools is to implement a coherent system of professional development. And this does take a lot of coordination and collaboration across many different departments. To start the year, we were able to successfully provide meaningful learning opportunities that were aligned to the unique needs of individual groups because of this coordination and collaboration. And I would like to thank all of those that were involved that enabled us to provide these sessions. Division-wide sessions focused on co-teaching, sources of strength, content-specific updates and instructional planning, literacy training, behavior support system, cooperative learning, and in K-8 math workshop. Teachers were also provided at least 15 hours of teacher-directed time. All of this is possible because of the incredible professional learning team that is dedicated to not only providing meaningful, engaging professional learning at the beginning of the year, but to keeping the learning going all year. It is critical that professional learning is ongoing and job-embedded. These individuals here on the screen are able to make that happen through consistent messaging across all schools, small chunks of professional learning through the CLT meetings, ongoing workshops, individual coaching, and resources that support implementation. As a team, we are constantly and consistently gathering feedback through surveys and discussions, which allows us to ensure we are connecting the dots for meaningful learning and growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loesch, thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Questions or comments from the board? I need hands, I need to see hands. Ms. Miles?
Sorry, I was very encouraged to see we only have three vacancies in the classroom, and that the increase of our retention was 5%, that's great. So hopefully we can break into 90%, that's our goal, right? I know, hopefully by the end of the school year, of course. I also love the dashboard to keep administrators aware of their staff and their process to obtain their licensure, because I know that's always like, a thing like, "Where are you in the process?" Usually talk to someone, but to see it on a computer is definitely helpful. And then the state interviews, I think that's amazing, to see why a staff member has chosen to sign the contract. And Administrator Academy, like, I think that's a great, because if we have successful administrators, we have successful students. So just, I feel like that, all the things that you guys are doing is, you know, moving in the right direction. And then the Jump Start program, like 80% of our new teachers participating in that is wonderful. Is that something that they, that you provide lunch and for the teachers as well during that time?
So we followed a typical professional learning day schedule. So that day lunch was not provided, but ample time for lunch and networking was provided during that time.
Yeah, because I was like, lunch would be a great incentive for those who didn't, that 20% that didn't sign up, you know, you get free lunch. But I think it's also great that we are offering opportunities to prepare our teachers, our new teachers, because I know right now, education's really hard to like, when you sign that contract, are you going to be supported? So knowing right off the bat, like, right when they step in that, before they step in that classroom, to know they're going to get that extra support, I think is wonderful. So thank you so much for what you guys are doing.
Anyone else to my right? To my left, Ms. Brown?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the presentation. Really excited. One of the things that I've noticed since I've been on the board for nine months is that recruitment and retention of assistant principals and principals. And I'm going to be the first one to use that slogan since I have all the principals and assistant principals here, "Your purpose has a place" in Manassas City Public Schools. And I want to make sure that you hear me tonight, that we want to retain you, we want to develop you, you are our backbone. We can retain teachers, we can develop teachers, but without you, they won't stay. So you are main, the main feature. I was walking around, I believe it was Hayden, and a student, so Dr. Newman, and he says, "Oh, you're like the main character of this whole, of this whole place." But I want to use that, assistant principals and principals, you guys are the main character of this story of Manassas City Public Schools. So I want to retain you, and I want to make sure that you live here tonight knowing that we want you to stay, your purpose has a place here. I wanted to talk about, and thank you again for only having three vacancies, that goes through the whole human, human resources department. I know how hard it is to get those teachers' vacancies closed and filled. So thank you for doing all the hard work behind the scenes. I wanted to talk a little bit about the evaluation process, because that, that's also going to come into part when we go into the data piece. How will we know that that's being accomplished throughout? From walk me through, from the top all the way to the bottom? Like, I don't, what systems do we have in place to ensure that we know that it's happening when it's supposed to happen? Okay?
So we utilize TalentEd, the perform component of TalentEd, and so we're able to run reports through there to ensure that initial goal-setting meetings are happening, the goal-setting forms are being completed, so we can monitor all of that by running reports through TalentEd across all of the schools. And so, for example, within the teacher evaluation, our administrators will have their beginning-of-the-year meetings. The teachers will submit their goal-setting forms, they'll have their mid-year meetings, that will be noted in the system, as well as their end-of-the-year meetings, and their final documentation summary. So we can run reports to ensure that all that's being completed, and track completion as well.
And you guys will keep track on that?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Brezja?
Thank you for the great presentation. I do have a few questions I want to follow up on. So going back to the retention rates, those are the instructional positions or just teachers?
Um, they would be our, yeah, classroom teachers, yes.
Classroom teachers, alright. Because as we sometimes go through
Yes.
our budget cycle, what is a teacher is a, sometimes it's some slipperier definition than people realize. So we, so we are exploring the reason for the change. You guys are continuing to do stay interviews?
Yes, we will continue those this year. Yep.
I mean, it will be, I don't know what your timing is for this, but as we go through the budget process, you know, and we're considering, you know, what impact does compensation have, for example, whether or not people stay, or whether or not people come, you know, that makes a, it makes a big impact in terms of our decision-making, so I'm really glad that you're continuing to study it, and we'll be looking forward to what you come back to us with because that will empower us to make a more strategic decision for making our numbers even better. The numbers that, the retention rate here, that reflects division-wide, it's not school by school.
Right, that is the division-wide number.
Right, so mileage may vary depending on
Correct.
what school, you know, what individual building you're coming from, but overall, 86.2%.
Yeah, that is the overall number.
Right. So our target, did, do we have a target? I heard 90% down there, isn't it? I don't think that was official, so.
I mean, I am, I am good with the 90, obviously we want it to increase, right? So we're continuing to, our goal is to continue to raise that retention rate as, as high as we can.
Well, because there is a healthy number, yeah, there is a healthy degree of churn, you know, you want new ideas, you want new people, you know, there is a, you know, the average American changes jobs every four years, right? So like, this is, there's a degree of inevitability also as people move on to different things. So I don't want us to find us in a position where we are chasing a target more than we are chasing talent and what's best for the kids, which goes back to, I did want to go back to slide number two, the strategic plan, I love seeing that, I love seeing the pillars, but I didn't hear the top, what's the top? This is all for?
Student academic success.
Thank you. Pop quiz?
Yes.
Are you paying attention, you're next? Anyway, so the, it was interesting that you mentioned the state interview results that we had before, because that got me thinking of the exit interview results. And that was striking, and anybody who wants to see the exit interview result, oh, they were preliminary results, because the exit interviews window had not closed. But that's on our, it's a presentation we got over our retreat, so you can see that on our board docs. And it was striking to me that the largest column was, "There is nothing you could do to keep me." Like, there was a, a good chunk of people who clicked, you know, "You couldn't change the compensation, you couldn't change any of these things, I'm just headed out." And so it goes to what I was saying before, like, sometimes that's just how it is, right? Like, sometimes people just decide for whatever, sometimes people's jobs transfer to Pennsyl, you know, people have spouses who transferred to Pennsylvania and they just got to go, you know? So anyway, just wanted to make that point. The, on the professional learning side, so I was excited, was this the first year for Jump Start?
It was, yes.
And how are we going to further, you know, study and refine this? Like, how do we know that that's going to be, how do we know whether it's been a success?
Yeah, so we do a number of different surveys at the beginning of the year and then throughout the year as well. So through that data, we hope to see an increase. Also, one of the things that we are constantly doing is reflecting on what are we offering and how is it impacting both on teachers, how do they feel? And what was that support like for them? But then also in thinking about how their performance is, student achievement, and, and thinking about all of those different factors as we're developing our professional learning. So all of those will be taken into account in order for us to refine the program as needed.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for that, that's all I've got.
Mrs. Spall?
Thank you, these are just rambling thoughts by Jill, no real thread here, but today, just today, I, I, every time this year I put up a thank you, But today, just today, I, I, every time this year I put up a thank you to you guys for, you know, addressing the teacher shortage in such a professional way, in such an engaging way. And so this year is, you know, better than all the others, but it is, it is something that I appreciate that you do. I hate to drill down, but I did tell one parent that the Spanish middle school position was filled. So I'm, I'm just asking, is that something that didn't happen or was I misinformed?
So there were two, there were two. So we did fill one and then we have, we're in the process.
Okay. Okay, so it's, okay, I guess we can talk offline. I just wanted to find out if I misunderstood. Also, want to continue for everyone to know that we want to hear from you when workforce housing is an issue to hire, because we are trying to kind of independently track that. I, I am trying to independently track that. And then also just a shout out, I heard one of teachers really sought me out to tell me how much they loved Dean Stevenson and how they could feel connected. So that's not to take anything away from anyone else, but the person felt really strongly that he's doing a really great job and being a great mentor, so thank you for that.
Compliments all the way around. I do have a question for Ms. Fisher, Mrs. Fisher. You said that you were committed to addressing the issues that you could through the parameters of HR, but I wanted to ask and just have a public record, if it's something that you can't fix, where does it go from there? I think I know the answer, but I would like to.
You mean, if it's something I feel as though it's outside of the control?
Right.
I, you know, I would go to my supervisor,
Okay.
Mr. Gaffeler and, and share feedback or to, to brainstorm with Dr. Newman as well.
Great, I just want
Very collaborative relationship.
all our employees to know that it's not going to, that we really do want to address things. We want to make things better for everybody, everybody in the family. Okay, that's my only question, Mrs. Stevens?
Just a quick question that came up as I was thinking. We're doing many, many things for our administrators and our teachers. What are we doing about hiring, supporting, onboarding our support staff? Because each individual layer in a school division matters. And if you take out any one layer, the whole system falls apart. So how are we supporting that support staff and onboarding new support staff?
Yeah, so we follow, in, in human resources, we follow a very similar process for, in the recruiting, hiring, and onboarding within human resources. We also have a fast colleagues program, which is similar to the teacher education and mentor program for our support staff, where they are assigned someone within their department who serves as that colleague, that liaison, that point of contact to help onboard them and be their source of support as they learn the Manassas City way and within their department as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, because I don't want to diminish the work anybody does, but if you're in a school day after day, you realize and you see there are all these unsung voices that we don't talk about and that we don't hear about, who make it possible for everybody to do what they need to do to support our kiddos. So thank you.
Ms. Spall has one question and I have one last question.
I'm sorry, I just, I love the bus tour and I didn't hear you really highlight that, so that's a glow that I want the whole world to know that we do. So I don't know if you want to speak to it or not, just for anyone who may not know. I love it.
So part of new Teacher Academy is a bus tour that has members of our MCPS staff, the, and our bus drivers go on a tour around Manassas City to see where our schools are, where our kiddos are living, our families are, and pointing out just what makes Manassas City, Manassas City. So it's a fun morning with everybody traveling together.
Thank you for that explanation. And I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned surveys and you send out lots of surveys, and I know that sometimes there can be a lot, but do we ask every employee what they need for PD?
So everything that we do is aligned to the strategic plan and our key priorities. So within schools, they have identified potentially areas of additional focus that they believe will allow their staff to achieve, meeting those key priorities. So indirectly, we get feedback, when we're gathering feedback around what it is that we're focusing on and needing. And then anytime anybody participates in a professional learning, there is typically opportunity for them to add in. And so then if they respond and add in that anecdotal component, then we're able to read that and take that into consideration as well.
Pretty good, thank you so much. All right, our last item on the discussion agenda is regarding accountability. And Dr. Jennifer Casada, Executive Director of Accountability and Finance, will present the 24-25 SOL pass rates and chronic absenteeism data from Manassas City Public Schools that were recently published by the Virginia DOE. Mr. Craig Gaffeler, Deputy Superintendent, will share MCPS responses to the data and the plans for the 25-26 school year. Dr. Casada?
All right, good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, School Board Members and Dr. Newman. Thank you for the opportunity to present student performance data for you tonight. This presentation is lengthy, but the level of detail is necessary to provide a full picture. The focus of our presentation is student academic success, specifically SOL pass rates and chronic absenteeism. I will present the data about SOL pass rates and chronic absenteeism, and then Mr. Gaffeler will discuss the MCPS strategic response to these data. All right, at the last meeting, I shared with you the overview of the VDOE School Performance and Support Framework and the timeline as we knew it for the release of data. Later that very week, VDOE updated school quality profiles with SOL pass rate on the assessments tab and chronic absenteeism data on the enrollment tab for the state, divisions, and schools to include 2024-25 data. The purpose of tonight's presentation is discuss the data that have been published and then to provide the MCPS strategic response to the data. VDOE has not yet released the accountability ratings through their new School Performance and Support Framework. Their timeline says that those ratings will be shared by the end of September. A presentation on those ratings will occur at a school board meeting in the future after that release. It is important to start our discussion with some context from VDOE. In their news release and published data slides, VDOE discussed how the new standards on which students were assessed in 2025 in Language Arts and Mathematics are, quote, "more rigorous, designed to help students achieve course and grade level proficiency in the content." Further, they added that, quote, "Students must show they know 30 to 40% more content than last year to pass new reading and mathematics SOLs." They stressed that the tests include more complex items and that students must apply and integrate knowledge across standards. The link at the bottom of this slide takes you to the full VDOE data presentation. When the MCPS strategic plan was adopted, aspirational targets were set of having 80% of students pass reading and mathematics SOL test by the end of the strategic plan. Of course, this remains our goal. However, it is worth noting that the targets were established when the previous standards were in place. The next two slides include screenshots taken directly from the VDOE presentation. This slide shows how they again highlighted the difficulty level of the standards and assessments, basically that students were expected to demonstrate higher levels of knowledge to pass tests in 24-25 than in previous years. While this presentation primarily focuses on SOL performance, it is important to note that the areas highlighted on this slide by VDOE are happening in MCPS as well, with more students taking advanced mathematics, more students taking dual enrollment or AP courses, more students earning CTE credentials, along with the implementation of high-quality instructional materials, most notably in language arts. This slide also includes a screenshot of a VDOE slide. The purpose of including this one is to show an example of how the performance expectations have gotten more rigorous. Previously, students could show proficiency through memorization and recall. With the current standards, students must also be able to justify reasoning and demonstrate deeper, deeper levels of understanding. An example from grade four reading is included. You can see on the left, in the past, the standard focused on students being able to retell events in a logical order. With the new standards, the focus expanded to summarize and analyze ideas and details, which is a higher level of thinking. Again, for anyone interested, the link to the full VDOE slide deck is included on Slide Three. The bulk of this presentation is going to focus on SOL performance. The pass rates that are shown are those that are published by VDOE on the assessments tabs. We are going to examine this performance in a variety of ways. We're going to take a funnel approach by starting big and working our way to finer detail. At each level of analysis, we use color coding to show where there were increases or decreases of more than two percentage points. We're going to start big at the division level by subject and test. We compare to the state as well as to performance in 23-24. In keeping with the state analyses, we will also look at some student group performance on the grades three through eight tests. We will then look at overall performance by subject at the school level. Then we will dive into performance by grade level and tests, first at the division level and then by comparing schools. You will see some of the same numbers repeated, but again, we're looking at it in different ways. All right, here we go. Okay, this is our first data slide, so let me provide some guidance in how to look at it. It shows us reading performance for both MCPS and the state at the overall subject level and by test for 23-24 and 24-25, with the change examined from 23-24 to 24-25. As I mentioned earlier, changes of more than two percentage points up or down are color-coded, green for an increase, red for a decrease. You see the acronym EOC on here, which stands for End of Course. That is the high school level reading test. You can see that MCPS had an increase on the grade six reading test, highlighted in green, but dips on the grade five and grade eight tests, highlighted in red. Okay, I mentioned before, we're going to look some, at the three through eight tests the way the state did. This slide takes a look at reading performance on the grade three through eight tests, which again excludes that high school end of course test. VDOE made a number of comparisons using this set of data, so we're doing the same. This slide shows how MCPS and the state performed on those grades three through eight tests in 23-24, 24-25, both overall and for some student groups. You can see that the performance of students with disabilities and Hispanic students in MCPS both dipped. Performance of English learners and Black students mirrors state performance levels. All right, the next two slides show the same information, but for mathematics. These numbers are at the division level. This slide includes overall mathematics performance plus performance on all of the individual mathematics tests. You can see from the amount of green, that mathematics was a strength through MCPS in 24-25, with double-digit increases at grade three, grade six, and Algebra II. Decreases were seen, however, on the grade seven and eight tests. All right, this slide is doing the same thing we did for reading, looking at the performance on the grades three through eight tests, which again exclude high school end of course tests taken both in middle and high school. So this is only the tests that are grade three through eight. This slide shows how we, how we compare to the state as well overall and by some student groups. Overall, MCPS improved performance on these tests with significant increases for English learners and Hispanic students. This slide looks at science performance at the division level as compared to the state. Overall, science performance was level for MCPS, but that doesn't tell the whole story. Performance at grade four was up, but performance in grade eight, I'm sorry, grade five was up, but performance in grade eight was down. Performance on the biology test was level, however, it is important to note that significantly more students took the test in 24-25 than in 23-24. To mix it up a little, the next two slides provide us with some visual representations of MCPS scores by school and for the division. The division is at the far right. 23-24 scores are shown in blue and 24-25 scores are shown in green. This slide looks at reading performance. When you look at the bars, you see that in most cases, but not all, the performance at the subject level is pretty even. However, again, that first look does not tell the whole story. Tonight, we will be looking more deeply into performance by test at the school level. On this slide, we're looking at the same thing, except for mathematics. Again, performance for each school in the division is shown for 23-24 in blue and 24-25 in green for math overall. Here you see variety in the patterns across schools. Most schools showed, showed increases, one was level and two went down. We will delve more deeply into patterns within and across schools in our upcoming slides. All right, all this, on this slide, we're still at the division level, but we're looking at by grade level and test, and both reading and math are included. So we've got elementary and intermediate school performance on this slide. At grade three, performance was relatively level in reading and was significantly higher in mathematics in 24-25 than in 23-24, with a 12-point increase. At grade four, there was a similar pattern to grade three, with an increase, just not quite as big. In grade five, there's a different pattern. Reading performance decreased in 24-25 and math performance was relatively level. Grade six showed increases in both reading and math in 24-25 compared to 23-24. In sixth grade, some of our students also take the grade seven math test. The performance was level from 23, 24 to 24-25, with 97% of those students passing the grade seven SOL test. Elementary and intermediate mathematics performance is very encouraging. On the next two slides, we will look even more closely at elementary school performance. On this slide, the performance in grades three and four reading is shown by school. As we saw earlier, division performance was relatively level in both grades three and four. However, as this slide shows, the story is more complex. Baldwin and Dean showed mixed performance with gains at one grade level and decreases at the other, although their patterns were opposite of one another. Gains were seen at Hayden in both grade levels, Weems was relatively level at both grade levels, and Round showed decreases at both grade levels. The next slide examines performance on the grade three and four mathematics test. There were some significant increases, which is exciting. At the division level, increases were seen at both grades three and grade four. Weems and Hayden echoed those gains at both grade levels. Again, Baldwin and Dean had mixed results, this time with level performance at one grade level, but increases at the other. And again, Round had decreases at both grade levels. On the next two slides, we're going to look at intermediate school data for reading and mathematics. This slide shows us reading performance for grades five and six. Here we see that grade five reading performance was down from the previous year at both schools. In grade six, performance was higher at Mayfield than in 23-24, while relatively level at Baldwin. This slide shows us the intermediate school trends for mathematics. At grade five, mixed results were seen across schools with an increase at Mayfield and a decrease at Baldwin. Grade six results were consistent with double, double-digit increases at both schools. The grade seven results for those students in advanced mathematics were quite high, with 97% passing overall. Baldwin performance went up and Mayfield was level. On this slide, we will look at middle and high school performance in reading, math, and science. And here you'll see the sub, the tests are not, are no longer at the top of the chart because of how many there are. Math and Metz, grade seven reading performance was relatively level and grade eight showed a decrease. Math performance decreased on the seventh, grade seven and eight tests, increased significantly in geometry, and performance on the Algebra I test was still at 94%. And in science, performance went down from 23-24 to 24-25. For Osborne, we're looking here at three tests, the end of course reading test, Algebra I and Biology, since these are the tests involved in accountability at the high school level. Reading performance was relatively level at Osborne. Algebra I performance increased, also with significantly more students taking the test. And Biology performance was level, as we said before, with significantly more students taking the test. We will take different looks at school level performance on future slides. But before that, before we move to school level data slides, we also want to discuss chronic absenteeism rates. This slide shows chronic absenteeism rates for 23-24 and 24-25 by school and for the division. As a reminder, students are defined as chronically absent when they miss 10% or more of their membership days. This slide shows the percent of students who were chronically absent in MCPS and at each school. Overall, the percent of students who were chronically absent in MCPS decreased from 22.3% in 23-24 to 20% in 24-25. Six schools were at or better than the state average of 14.8% in 24-25. Hayden, Metz, and Osborne all had improvements of four percentage points or more. All right, the next of the slides provides school level data snapshots. We've already discussed school level data in the context of specific subjects and grade levels. These slides allow us a different look at the school data. And at the elementary school later, level, we also have early literacy data to complement the SOL data. We begin with Baldwin, and on this slide, I'm going to go in a little bit more detail to show you what you're looking at, but don't worry, you won't have as long for each of the slides. We begin with Baldwin Elementary School. SOL data show mixed results across grade levels with increases at fourth grade and mixed results at third grade. When you look at the cohort of students who moved from grade three in 23 to 24 to grade four in 20, 24-25, you see level performance in reading and an increase in mathematics. Baldwin did have some success with retakes, with over 50% of students passing retakes in reading. As a reminder, students in grades three through eight are eligible for expedited retakes if they score between 375 and 399 on their initial attempt, with 400 being the passing score. The other piece of data on this slide is the early literacy data. When our strategic plan was adopted, a priority was placed on early literacy, with one of the aspirational targets focused on students meeting early literacy benchmarks by grade two. Last year, the state moved from using PALS to using the Virginia Language and Literacy Screening System, VALS, which is definitely a mouthful both to say and to type with those extra Ls and Ss for assessing early literacy. This change coincided with the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Students are assessed for a risk level. The goal is for students to be identified at low risk. Really, the first goal is to have students not identified at high risk and then thus need a reading plan. But you can see from Fall '24 to Spring '25, Baldwin had a significant increase in the percent of K2 students identified as low risk across grades K through two. At Baldwin, 67% of the students were at low or moderate risk in the spring. Students at low or moderate risk correspond conceptually to how we assess grade level benchmarks with PALS in the past. All right, now we're going to move on to Dean Elementary School. As with Baldwin, there were some mixed results at Dean on the SOL test. At Dean, significant increase, increases were shown in third grade on both reading and math tests, while fourth grade had while fourth grade had a decrease in reading and a slight decrease in math. When you look at the cohort moving from grade three in 23-24 to grade four in 24-25, you do see improvements in reading by six points and in mathematics by 15 points. Dean also had some good success with retakes, this time in mathematics, with over 60% of students eligible for retakes passing the SOL test. In terms of early literacy, a significant increase in the percent of students identified as low risk did occur from fall to spring. And also at the spring, 49% of students K2 at Dean were identified as either low or moderate risk. At Hayden, increases were shown in both grades three and four in both reading and mathematics. Double-digit gains occurred in math at both grade levels. When you look at the cohort moving from grade three in 23 to 24 to grade four in 24-25, you see level performance in reading and a 17-point increase in mathematics. One factor contributing to increases was success with retakes. In reading, over 60% of students eligible for retakes passed and over 50% of students eligible for retakes in mathematics passed. In early literacy, a significant increase was shown in the percent of students identified as low risk from fall to spring. And in addition, by spring 2025, 68% of the students were either low or moderate risk. At Round, significant decreases occurred in both reading and math at both grades three and four. When you look at the cohort moving from grade three in 23-24 to grade four in 24-25, you see a slight decrease in reading, a significant decrease in reading, I'm sorry, compared to only a slight decrease in mathematics. Round did have success with retakes in mathematics with over 50% of those students who were eligible for retakes passing. Early literacy data are encouraging with significant increase in the percent of students identified as low risk from fall to spring. In the spring, a total of 71% of the students were identified as low or moderate risk. At Weems, significant increases were shown in mathematics in both grades three and four. And reading performance was level. When you look at the cohort moving from grade three in 23-24 to grade four in 24-25, you see an increase in reading of seven points and an incredible increase in mathematics of 32 points. A significant increase in the percent of students identified as low risk occurred from fall to spring. And in addition, 70% of students were identified as low or moderate risk in spring 2025. At the intermediate level, we will be looking at SOL scores only. Moving forward, VALS will be administered K8, so we will have additional data points in the future. We're going to start with Baldwin Intermediate. In fifth grade, decreases in reading and math were shown. In sixth grade, increases were shown for mathematics, both for students taking the grade six test, as well as for advanced math students taking the seventh grade test. Reading performance was relatively level with a one-point decrease. When you look at the cohort moving from grade five in 23-24 to grade six in 24-25, you do see an increase in reading of five points. For mathematics, it is trickier to look at the cohort since students take different tests in grade six. When taken together, the cohort itself did improve slightly by one point. BIS did show some success with retakes in math with over 50% of eligible students passing their retakes, and science scores did increase as well by nine points. Now we are looking at Mayfield Intermediate. In fifth grade, results were mixed with decreases in reading but increases in mathematics. In sixth grade, increases were shown in reading and mathematics, most notably on the grade six math test. Also, 98% of the students taking the grade seven math test, those students in advanced mathematics, passed that test. When you look at the cohort moving from grade five in 23-24 to grade six in 24-25, you do see a decrease in reading of five points. For mathematics, again, it's a little trickier to look at, but when you take them all together, the cohort was level in terms of performance, when you take all of the sixth graders. Mayfield did show success with retakes in mathematics with over 50% of eligible students passing their retakes. And science pass rates also increased at Mayfield. As with the intermediate schools, at Metz, we're also just looking at SOL performance. In reading, decreases were shown at grade eight with a slight decrease in grade seven. For mathematics, we see some mixed results. Recall that students in grade seven and eight do not all take the same mathematics courses and assessments. Seventh grade students can take the grade seven test, the grade eight test, or the Algebra I test, based on what course they're enrolled in. Eighth grade students can take the grade eight test, the Algebra I test, or the geometry test. Performance of students who are in advanced mathematics continues to be high with 94% passing Algebra I and 98% passing geometry. In addition, 85% of those students in seventh grade who took the grade eight test passed that test. In addition, over 70, I'm sorry, 65% of the students eligible for retakes on those high school level tests passed. However, performance of students taking the on-grade level tests remains quite low and decreased in 24-25. When you look at the cohort that moved from grade seven in 23-24 to grade eight in 24-25, you see a decrease in reading of three points and a decrease in math of nine points. That's across all tests. There was also a decrease shown on the grade eight science test. Our final school data slide is for Osborne. This slide looks at SOL data in two ways. First, we look at performance on the three tests used for accountability that I mentioned before, reading, Algebra I, and biology. Increases were shown on Algebra I with significantly more students taking the test. Reading performance was relatively level and biology performance was level, again, as I've said before, with significantly more students taking the test. The second graph shows overall performance in mathematics and science. Math performance overall increased by 10 percentage points. This also includes performance in Algebra II and geometry, which aren't broken out because there are far smaller numbers of students. In science, performance was relatively level, and this also includes performance in earth science and chemistry. As we come to the end of the data portion of this presentation, this slide provides some of the key findings. In reading, performance was relatively level at most grade levels. This is even with the increased rigor of new standards and assessments, new instructional resources, and all the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. Grade six saw the biggest increase and grades five and eight saw the biggest decreases. In math, there is much cause for excitement. Overall, performance increased at a rate outpacing state gains. All grade levels from grade three through six showed increases, as did Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. Decreases were shown on grade seven and eight tests. Advanced mathematics performance is also encouraging with a pass rate of 97% for grade six students taking the grade seven test, 94% pass rate for students taking Algebra I in middle school, and a 98% pass rate for students taking the geometry tests in middle school. As I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, I will be back to present the accountability status for schools after VDOE releases that information. I will now turn the presentation over to Mr. Gaffeler, who will discuss the strategic response to the data.
Thank you.
Good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Before I get into our response on the SOL results, I do want to pause and thank our teachers, our instructional assistants, our administrators, our office staff, central office staff, food service workers, bus drivers, nurses, psychologists, social workers, maintenance staff. Every one of these educators is important to the mission and vision of MCPS and supports our students directly and indirectly. I stand here tonight representing the hard work of so many dedicated professionals throughout our division. I want to begin tonight by providing some context. All of our students returned to in-person learning full-time during the 21-22 school year. The school year, that school year, our focus was on helping students begin to recover the learning that they lost during the pandemic. But it was not an easy or a normal year. Large numbers of students were frequently quarantined, and in some cases, entire classes were sent home for days at a time. Many students had a transition in and out of classroom multiple times, which made it extremely difficult to address the unfinished learning that our students had. At the same time, we began writing the new strategic plan. A process delayed by the pandemic, since its adoption, we have worked to align every priority and initiative to that plan and our aspirational goals. It is important to note that those goals were written under different standards and different SOL assessments in reading, math, and science. As VDOE has made clear, the new standards and new assessments are more rigorous and more complex. In the 21-22 school year, we also began laying the foundation for a cycle that works that would begin in the 22-23 school year. This was intentionally designed as a two-year rollout plan based on staff feedback so that we could build it thoughtfully and systematically. It is our way of ensuring that every child has access to guaranteed curriculum, that lessons are aligned to standards, that decisions are based and driven by data, and that data is consistently used to provide both interventions and enrichment. At the end of the 21-22 school year, we took additional steps to set ourselves up for improvement for the following school year. We redesigned our master schedule guidelines to better support instruction, and the school board provided schools with additional targeted resources, for example, reading support and math support teachers at our elementary schools. Our story of recovery began just four years ago. Providing that context matters. Knowing where we started matters. And I want to be clear, this is about sharing context, not offering a groundwork for excuses. While we celebrate real progress in some areas, I also acknowledge that significant work remains ahead of us. And it is now with those shifts in place that I want to talk about where we are as a school division today. I just talked about where our story began, but now I want to add another chapter and share what last year looked like in our story. This past year brought the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, which required not only a shift in instructional practices, but also a shift in thinking and trust in the research around literacy instruction and the science of reading, which is a comprehensive approach to literacy instruction. Teachers had to complete a Canvas-based professional learning course on teaching with the science of reading. The Virginia Department of Education did not release the courses until August and September for our classroom teachers, just as schools were opening. That meant teachers were learning new content curriculum and instructional strategies and methods while simultaneously teaching new, more rigorous standards with no crosswalk year as in the past. The same was true in learning new math standards with no crosswalk year. In addition, we had a new high-quality instructional literacy resource to learn new SOL tests in math and reading to prepare for, new early literacy assessments to administer, and individualized learning plans to develop for every student identified as at-risk in our elementary schools. I want to be clear, again, I am not creating a narrative for excuses. This was the reality across the state, and it was a heavy lift. But as I said earlier, context matters. Understanding these challenges helps explain the environment in which our teachers, our leaders, and students were working and learning. I am proud of the work that our educators are doing to help students be successful. And despite those challenges, we learned a lot from last year and had success. Literacy data and classroom observations highlight that reading instruction continues to need our close attention. By ongoing attention, we mean making sure that our high-quality instructional materials, benchmark advanced, are fully implemented with fidelity, and that literacy instruction and assessments are matched and aligned to the rigor of the new standards. At the same time, the early grades, the VALS literacy data, shows encouraging signs that we are moving in the right direction. In mathematics, we saw real gains at key grade levels and overall as a division. And in one of the areas that we've been working hardest on, chronic absenteeism, is where we are beginning to see steady, meaningful improvements. And with that chapter behind us, I want to turn the page and talk about changes and strategies that we are putting in place for the 25-26 school year to continue moving our school division forward. Building on the lessons that we learned last year, we are moving into the new school year with clearer priorities and more targeted supports. Our focus is on strengthening tier-one instruction, the core instruction that every student receives. To do this, we are making high-quality lessons more accessible by recording model lessons and making them available on demand for teachers to use as reference and professional growth tools. We are also providing professional learning that goes deeper. Teachers will have opportunities to strengthen co-teaching approaches, ensuring that general education, ESOL teachers, and special education teachers are working in true partnership. Benchmark advanced staff will continue to provide targeted training so that our literacy instruction is not only consistent across classrooms, but also fully aligned to the rigor of the new standards. And we are expanding coaching so that all teachers will be supported in implementing the cooperative learning structures at least once per quarter. Another area of focus is support for our special education teachers. We reorganized how we deliver support so that teachers feel less isolated and more connected to system-wide resources, ensuring they can provide interventions and accommodations more effectively. At the division level, we are also strengthening structures beyond the classroom. We are launching enhanced alternative education options to provide new pathways for students who need different approaches to be successful. Updates to attendance regulations are being finalized to build on the progress we've made in reducing chronic absenteeism, so schools now have a clear protocols and stronger tools to keep students engaged. We are also introducing a new system for tracking and reporting behavior incidents, which will allow us to establish consistent expectations and provide better data for decision-making across all of our schools. Taken together, these changes are designed to ensure that every student has access to high-quality, rigorous instruction, and that schools have systems and supports they need to keep students present, engaged, and on track. Just as we are making division-wide changes, we are also turning the page at the school level. Each school has its own unique story and set of needs, and our changes reflect that. At multiple schools, we are expanding the use of Summit K-12 Connect to Literacy, which includes Osborne High School, Metz, Baldwin Intermediate, Mayfield, and Weems. This initiative is designed to provide targeted support for students, families, teachers, and educators, ensuring that English learners achieve measurable growth. The program specifically targets the English language development needs of each student related to listening, reading, speaking, and writing. This gives students greater access to tailored instructional support. This is about making sure that students at every level have the right scaffolds to succeed. At Round Elementary School, a new principal is bringing new leadership and expertise. Her focus is on ensuring that reading instruction is aligned to the new standards and that the benchmark advanced resources are used with fidelity to accelerate literacy growth. Ms. Boatwright is committed to ensuring a cycle that works is implemented with fidelity, that data is being used to drive instruction, that lessons in every classroom are aligned with the new standards in reading and math, and that the work remains focused on our division initiatives. At Metz Middle School, we've made instructional adjustments to strengthen instruction and support. For example, Ms. Finnegan has her administrative team organized so that her assistant principals' primary responsibilities are focused on instruction. We've added a second instructional facilitator and a teacher on special assignment for special education, while also refining the Mustang block to align it with the needs of our students better. These shifts are making sure that Metz has the right supports and structures in place to support staff to drive improvement. This is intended to better support collaboration through CLT meetings, provide teachers with more frequent feedback on classroom instruction, and actionable steps to improve student outcomes. At Osborne High School, we revised attendance protocols, building on last year's progress in reducing chronic absenteeism. These changes are designed to keep more students in school every day and ensure they stay on track for graduation. All of these school-level adjustments are part of a broader story, making sure that leadership, resources, and systems are in place where they are needed most. As we talk about all of these changes, I want to step back and remind us that our story is still grounded in the same foundation. Even as each chapter brings new challenges and opportunities, our strategic priorities remain steady. They are the through line through our story. We remain committed to student academic success, ensuring that every child has the opportunity to meet rigorous standards and thrive. We remain committed to high-quality instruction, making sure our teachers have the tools, training, and support they need to deliver engaging, effective lessons. We remain committed to inclusive practices, guaranteeing that all students, regardless of background, language, or ability, have access to opportunities. And we remain committed to safe and supportive environments because learning cannot happen unless students feel safe, cared for, and connected. These priorities will continue to guide us as we move forward. These are proven initiatives that make a difference for student achievement. And so as I close, I want to bring the story back to the people who made it possible. Our teachers, our instructional assistants, our administrators, central office staff, food service workers, bus drivers, nurses, psychologists, social workers, and maintenance staff. Their hard work and commitment are what drive our progress. The data shows us that while challenges remain, we are seeing encouraging signs. Mathematics is a real area of growth. Attendance is improving, and our systems are becoming more aligned and more focused. These are not just numbers, they are evidence of growth, and I want to conclude by highlighting some of this evidence. As I previously said previously, our focus remains on our strategic priorities, and that means we need everyone all in. I began by discussing content. I began by discussing context, and it's important to approach this work with curiosity rather than judgment. It would be easy to look at the data and say that the plan isn't working. What I see is an opportunity to strengthen the implementation of the plan across every school, every grade level, every content team. And when you look carefully, when you compare where we were in 21-22, when we implemented the Return to Learn Plan, to when we implemented our strategic plan in the 22-23 school year, to where we are now in the 24-25-26 school year, but based on 24-25, you see clear evidence that our plan is making a difference. When you compare SOL results between the 21 and 22 school year and the 24-25 school year, you will see growth. At Baldwin Elementary, math scores have risen 21 points. Reading has risen five points. At Baldwin Intermediate, science has increased 21 points and math by 12. At Hayden Elementary School, reading scores grew by 14 points and math scores have surged by 31 points. At Weems Elementary School, reading grew by six points and math by 24 points. At Mayfield Intermediate School, math has gone up by 21 points and science by 19 points. And at Osborne High School, mathematics has improved by 11 points. These gains are not accidents. They are the result of focused leadership, intentional planning, and persistence. And I want to share the voices of our leaders to highlight the work behind the numbers. So I asked our principals of those schools that I just talked about to share with me from their perspective, what made the difference between our data last year and where we were in 21-22. And I'm going to read you verbatim what they sent to me. Dr. Goldsung at Hayden said, "One of the most transformative shifts has been the formal implementation of collaborative learning team structures across all grade levels. Beginning in the 22-23 school year, we established a consistent and effective CLT cycle that has strengthened instructional planning and delivery. Through this process, teachers collaboratively unpack standards, develop a shared understanding of mastery, and design instruction that is rigorous, aligned, and consistent across classrooms. This foundation has led to measurable gains in student achievement. In mathematics, growth was evident from the very beginning of this change, particularly in grades three and four. Our focus on targeted conceptual understanding through task-based problem-solving and hands-on learning has deepened students' engagement and comprehension. In reading, Hayden began to see significant improvements in 23-24, driven by more intentional planning and alignment with grade level standards. Across all content areas, we've increased opportunities for student writing, which has enhanced both literacy and critical thinking. We also prioritize student discourse, encouraging learners to articulate their thinking and engage in meaningful conversations about their learning. And finally, our collective focus on school-wide improvement goals and strategies has brought clarity to our vision and purpose for student learning. This shared commitment has unified our efforts and ensured that every instructional decision is grounded in what is best for students." Ms. Hupman at Weems said, "Following the CLT process with fidelity, so all teachers understand what students need to learn while they create lessons and activities that focus on students acquiring knowledge. A stable workforce with low teacher turnover, a robust, multi-tiered system of supports process which identifies students by name and by need, followed with actionable steps to close gaps in learning for students, the use of high-quality instructional materials in all classrooms, targeted support based on data collection, and expectation across the school that learning is required, period. Classroom teachers' use of WEDA can-do descriptors based on student scores in each of the four domains of language assessed on the WEDA access test, an unwavering commitment to building foundational skills in all grade levels, an increase in staffing levels for ESOL, reading support, and math support. Nothing exceptional, just grinding through the work to better equip our teachers to meet the needs of our students." Mr. Rupert at Baldwin Elementary said, "School improvement plan efforts in math were targeted with reasoning, probability, and statistics. Number talks turned into more general math talk. Reasoning routine with all reporting categories as a focus. Power standards, number sense, and computation were major focuses during the online learning due to time and pacing. The Cycle That Works allowed expertise from instructional facilitators, leading team collaboration with content specialists present to support. This allowed administration to be more of a part of the instructional process in the planning and monitoring of lessons. Getting students talking and getting back to real life through targeted student collaboration efforts that have turned into more structured and improved approach with our Kagan Cooperative Learning Initiative, focusing on the Virginia Department of Education mathematical terms instead of just the Orgo vocabulary. The Cycle That Work allowed us to have these conversations of the Virginia Department of Education terms that needed to be efficient and more aligned. The use of more manipulatives in understanding the standards. Content specialists in the Cycle That Work supported supplying resources and modeling effective use of the manipulatives. In reading, the Cycle That Works, everything said for math plus digging into the standards, building vocabulary, background knowledge, and providing scaffolds based on name and need. We feel this has supported us to trust the intentionality of the Virginia Literacy Act implementation at Baldwin Elementary School, while the leaders we were ready to model and support. Realizing the language of the standard through the Cycle That Works, vertical alignment, and being efficient, comprehensive with planning lessons and addressing skills. We utilized a targeted support block to fill in gaps using the resources and knowledge and aligned with the science of reading. This allowed us to address each student by name and by need." Ms. Jackson from Baldwin Intermediate. "In the 24-25 school year, we implemented the team teaching model in our master schedule in an effort to utilize our staff in the areas of which they were instructionally strongest, to include focuses on math and English Language Arts. We shifted our focus to strategic course placement of students. This means ensuring that students are properly identified in the areas of regular and advanced mathematics, pre-algebra, and gifted and talented identification. This resulted in an increase in our pre-algebra scores for the 24-25 school year. We implemented a CLT-intensive protocol for math in the fall, winter, and spring, which provided our teachers with three opportunities for professional development in their content area and collaborative structured data reviews. We continue to focus on the effective implementation of a cycle that works through the CLT process with opportunities for coaching and feedback. For our BALT-O block, we engaged in targeted intervention using the ST Math. In addition, we purchased a license from Math Facts Lab to assist students in learning necessary foundational math skills. Our math support teacher provided small group instruction in addressing specific standards, identified in assessments for intervention, and reteaching opportunities. We utilized our instructional technology support teacher to increase accessibility of the curriculum for all students through technology. As with English, we will offer after-school bootcamps for our students in need of Tier Two support. We piloted our Summit K-12 Connect to Literacy four days a week after school for our ESOL learners, resulting in overall increase for our ESOL learners across all contents, including math. Steps for increasing science spiraling the unmastered fourth-grade science standards into the fifth-grade curriculum. We partnered with our Division Coordinator for Science as a resource to collect baseline data using fourth-grade diagnostics to determine which standards our fifth-grade students needed to master. This is a change to our STEM curriculum, which included the restructuring and delivery of the content to include both fourth and fifth-grade standards in the SOL curriculum. From there, we identified standards to target through the teaching and reteaching during our BALT-O block and our STEM Encore class. We implemented progress monitoring to determine the need for intervention and reteaching and enrichment. In regards to our instructional model, we increased our science instruction time by 100% from 40 minutes every other day in the 23-24 school year to 80 minutes every other day for the 24-25 school year. This allowed our teachers to dive deeper into the five E instructional model: engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate. We know that the SOLs require that our students explain, elaborate, evaluate, so we implemented the CLT-intensive protocol to provide professional development to our teachers in the last three Es of the cycle, which we know is critical to success in understanding not only the what, but the why of their science experiments. This paired with the close following of our STEM Scopes curriculum and implementation of our cooperative learning structures maximized the effect of our science instruction each day. As with English and math, we offered our after-school bootcamps in science for our students in need of Tier Two support. As of the 24-25 school year, 100% of our students are enrolled in STEM, where they receive instruction in the spiral of fourth-grade standards and continue to expand on the concepts taught in their fifth-grade science classes. We continue this practice in sixth-grade science as well, as we know the middle-school science SOL is also cumulative, and we intend to set our students up for success as they advance through MCPS. The curriculum for STEM is pre-product-based inquiry learning, where students have designated time for hands-on learning of the material that gradually reinforces and reteaches previously learned standards in fourth and fifth grade. It may feel intermediate. We have worked diligently to foster an inclusive and collaborative learning environment. We have fully implemented STEM Scopes, which provides our students with high-quality, hands-on science instruction. To support this work, we align our science assessments to state standards and increase their rigor, ensuring all students are well-prepared. Within our classrooms, we intentionally embed scientific practices in our lessons. So students are actively engaging with data, creating models, and conducting experiments. Teachers consistently use the five E model: engage, explore, explain, elaborate, and evaluate in their science classes and discuss its effectiveness in our collaborative meetings. Our new master schedule provides dedicated time for collaborative planning, ensuring that special education and ESOL teachers are integrated into our teams. We've also refined our scheduling practices to focus on increasing student access to the general education setting and to promote inclusive practices. In addition, the schedule includes dedicated time for our intervention through our Bobkit block, which allows us to address individual student needs. During the fourth quarter, an emphasis is placed on providing students with targeted interventions in fifth-grade science based on data trends from common assessments administered through the school year. Equally important, we are intentional about building culture of caring. Our teachers are creating classroom environments that build strong communities and teach structured routines which minimize behavioral disruptions and maximizes learning time. Supporting this culture requires quality workforce. We are fortunate to have experienced teachers who are knowledgeable about the content and utilize best practices for instruction. Educators set specific measurable goals to increase student pass rates on the SOLs by 10%. And we regularly monitor our progress through the Teacher Performance Evaluation System. To support growth, administrators conduct regular classroom observations and provide consistent feedback, offering strategies to strengthen student engagement. And finally, we recognize the importance of strong and family-community partnerships. Through improved communication with families, we have been able to increase student attendance, which has resulted in students being present at school regularly and fully engaged to engage in lessons. And Dr. Chapman at the High School says, "The creation of the Algebra Functions and Data Analysis Class focused for students who failed the Algebra I SOL the prior year to increase foundational algebra skills and give students an opportunity to retest on the SOL in December and May of the following year, focusing on limiting decimals use and instead using the handheld calculators for foundational skills, mainly equation solving, to ensure that students are learning the process and not obtaining an answer from a tool that can solve the problem for them. Many of our teachers, especially Algebra I, reported some early struggles, but ultimately, students had a stronger grasp on the targeted skills at the end of the school year. We also had each CLT identify critical ins and outs, which were used to drive our critical skill data tracking. With that, we identified essential skills for each unit and designed common formative assessments to measure the skill so that CLTs could work together on remediation and spiral instruction prior to the summative assessments. That one is a work in progress, but we at least got a few successful iterations of it and are trying to build upon it this year and start in the other subjects as well." So just to conclude, their words show us what is possible when schools align the plan, use high-quality resources with fidelity, and stay focused on student learning. And so while we have much work to do, this story we are writing it together. A story of progress, a story of persistence, and a belief that every student in Manassas City Schools can and will succeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gaffeler. And Dr. Casada. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you for that very in-depth, both in-depth presentations. It's a lot to digest. I'm sure we all have many things buzzing around in our heads, but the first thing I want to say is, handheld calculators instead of decimals. A lot of people don't know what decimals is. It's an online calculator where the student just has to type in the equation or the expression or the inequality, and it pops out an answer. And then students are unable to explain how they got there. So I think that's something I hadn't heard anyone doing, so I think that's great and I think it's really helpful because it teaches our students to better understand the processes and the steps to get where they're going. So first of all, I have to say, that's great. It's a tiny thing, but it's a tiny thing that kind of means a lot. I have lots of questions. I'm not going to ask them all because they're a little bit all over the place. My first question has to do with absenteeism. Overall, it looks really good. But we have a couple of schools where the percentage has really jumped. When we see a percentage in absenteeism jump, to me, what feels like a significant amount, do we step in and examine what may be underlying causes for that increase in chronic absenteeism?
All right. So I can speak a couple of things. It's important to note, and this is also context, not an excuse, but in, at one of the schools at Baldwin Intermediate where there was a jump, you have to remember the size of Baldwin Intermediate, and so you can have a significant swing in percentage up or down when you're talking specifically with the numbers of kids for absenteeism. So that's important to note. Yes, from my conversations with principals, they are aware of these trends as they're happening and they're doing things to keep targeting it. There's only so much you can control, but absolutely, when they're looking at it, this is something that they're trying to figure out the causes, because those causes are going to be different in elementary school and intermediate, middle, and high school. So I can tell you with certainty that that's something the principals are exploring.
And you know, thank you for mentioning Baldwin Intermediate, because just when you look at the numbers, you're not thinking population.
Right.
And a jump of 6% or 7% in one school represents a much higher number of children than in another school. And I know in Baldwin, what is our student population, Baldwin Intermediate?
Two seventy-six.
Yeah, so 16% of 276 is going to be very different than 16% of 2,000. So I appreciate you sharing that piece of information because I hadn't thought of it in that sense until you mentioned it. And it is great to see so many schools that are coming down and that are at or better than the state average because they know chronic absenteeism is something we've really struggled with. And at some schools, it's been a very significant issue, so I really appreciate all the work that's been done on that. And I appreciate you sharing little bits about cohorts when we're talking about LSOL scores. Because anecdotally, just flipping through them and kind of comparing some of those cohorts, the drops or changes in scores are not as significant because your students who were in third grade in 2023-24 are now in fourth grade in 24-25. And so in some ways, it would kind of make sense for those pass rates to still be similar to when they were in third grade, unless there was a huge change in instructional practices. Does what I'm saying make sense?
Yes. And so it's important to look at things multiple ways. This year, because of all of the changes, we did the focus, the primary focus, and you saw all the graphs were focusing on year-to-year comparisons because of the context the state laid out. But it was important for us to walk through when we did the school-level discussion about those cohorts. So each school, right, has a different story to tell, but the cohorts of kids coming through each one of those cohorts, right, our kids who were in third grade in 23-24, fourth grade in 24-25, fifth grade in 25-26. All right, I got through that without messing up the years. Their story and their experience- Their their story and their experiences throughout their lives and the turmoil that happened between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two is different than those students who are now in ninth grade, right? So those that context is important to look at. Both pieces. I think both pieces are critical to tell the story.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. And what I would like to see is just something that shows the movement amongst cohorts in that pass rate. Because I think if we could see that cohort that was, you know, third grade in twenty-two, twenty-three, and then fourth grade in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then fifth grade in twenty-four, twenty-five, to see if their pass rates increased, because I think that's a very valuable piece of information. Because that tells that those are kids who are truly learning, because that's growth. And personally, me being a teacher, I think growth is more important, but that's just me. So we don't need to go on with that. And then we were talking about, Mr. Goodfeller was talking about checking on fidelity of implementation of Benchmark Advanced. How are we ensuring, how are we checking on the fidelity of implementation?
Through classroom observations with administration. We're also doing, our instructional coordinators and through our Department of Instruction is doing walkthroughs as well. But primarily through that process. Ms. Emden is in supporting teachers as well. So it's really a variety of ways, but it's being present in classrooms, making sure those things are happening, make sure that CLTs are being focused, that things are being planned according to the standards and using the materials, and then making sure that those plans are then being implemented in the classrooms.
Okay. And then I did want to talk a little about about the new reading standards of learning and how they are much more stringent than previously. And I want to talk for a minute about how quickly all of the change occurred. I think Dr. Stevenson, I'm not going to put him on the spot and ask him to answer anything, but I really recall every meeting for a while, Dr. Stevenson would come up and tell us, "No, the state still hasn't told us what our approved instructional materials are for reading." And over and over and over again, and if I recall correctly, we didn't find out what the approved instructional materials for middle school were until well into the summer. And teachers are used to, especially content area, having an idea of what's going to happen the next year as far as instructional practices are concerned. But this was an instance where this rollout was really fast. And we did have some instructional materials, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we had that the state said no. Is that correct? Am I recalling that correctly?
We had Scholastic. We used Scholastic Resource, which did not make it through the vetting process through the Department of Education. And so we had to adopt an entirely new resource.
So typically, when we adopt a new resource, how much time do we spend digging into that resource and learning that resource as educators before we put it on our children and assess our children?
More than we got this year, is what I would say. Typically, they have what is called a crosswalk year. And a crosswalk year is where you're teaching two sets of standards, but still being assessed on the old standards, and then you have full implementation the following year. So it's typically done over a two-year process. In this case, it was done, there was no crosswalk year for either math or reading. The intervention materials, we had to wait for those to be approved, and then there were changes, and then we were constantly, we would call and say, you know, what is, where are we at with this? We'd call the state. We'd call our Virginia literacy partner, which they would say, "We'll talk to the state." We'd say, "Talk to the, we talked to the state." They'd say, "Talk to your literacy partner." And so, you know, but when you think about the Canvas Professional Learning Course that all of our teachers had to take, and they weren't ready until, for our classroom teachers, for August or September.
I remember. I took this.
Yep.
And I took them after school started.
And they were in-depth. And so it was, you know, we already had students back and we're enrolling. And so that's a reality that we faced that we had to overcome.
Yeah. So, you know, thank you for sharing all those things, and that that doesn't mitigate the pass rate issues with the reading SOL.
Right.
And that doesn't say we don't have a lot of work to do. But at the start of this school year, are we in a better place than we were at the start of last school year for providing our kids with that instruction that teaches them to be deep learners of content?
Yes, and I would say that we actually have data to support that. We administer at the end of the year, we administered a survey and looking at where you started last year, being prepared to teach and engage in the Virginia Literacy Act and use Benchmark Resources, to where you concluded at the end, and we had significant, I think we shared that at the retreat the summer, where we had a high level of growth of people, teachers feeling that they are better prepared now than they were at the start of the school year. So I feel like we are in a better place than we were a year ago. We've learned a lot in terms of the Virginia Literacy Act. We expand that now, where, as Dr. Casada talked about, expanding the use of vowels to upper grades. And so I think that we have, that we're better prepared than we were a year ago.
So you bring up vowels. Vows is new, relatively new to the state of Virginia. Do we know how the vowels data for the upper grades is going to be used by the VDOE yet?
I do not know that.
Okay, great. I'm just going to ask one more question. I know I have a lot more, but I'm, they're all bouncing around in my head. The VDOE came out and said that SOLs will be administered, the SOL open window for administration is going to be much later this year. What are the thoughts on that? Do we think that's a, because there's very, there's two very different schools of thought, and I can see the smile on your face. As to whether or not that's a good thing, but doesn't that provide our teachers with more instructional time, especially considering we had so many schools where fifty percent of students pass the retake? So...
Okay, so that's a, that's a complex question with a complex answer, so I'm going to do Reader's Digest for now, and we can get you and the board more information, because this is, it's VDOE, so everything is ever-changing, right? So one of the things the Virginia Board of Education, and then thus the Virginia Department of Education, has talked about is shortening the SOL window and pushing it later. On the one hand, you say, "Great, more instruction before the SOL tests." However, it then does have an unintended or intended, depending on your perspective, consequence of fewer opportunities for retakes. So I don't know exactly how that's going to play out. We have not gotten, I'm looking back at Pedro Hernandez, our division testing guru, and we haven't gotten all the information on that or many other things from them yet, and so we're keeping an eye on that, because there are consequences. And there's pros and cons to the later window. Retakes, when done well, can be a success for students. You heard that tonight. And so I would be wary of things that would take that opportunity away, but there's, again, pros and cons on both sides, so we can put something together for you once we have a little more information from the state.
Yeah, I was just curious about it. I was listening to everything that was being said. Like I said, I am sure I have a lot more questions, but I'm not going to take up everyone's time, so thank you, Mr. Goodfeller, and thank you, Dr. Casada.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you once again for all the information. So going back to Slide Five, you gave, there was an example from the state about example of grade four reading for twenty-twenty, and then in twenty-twenty-five, and how it's looking for different types, it wants more analyzing and instead of just retail. How are we relating this to parents of how they can help the students? How are we relating this information to parents so they could also help us to help their students, their children?
I think that we, you know, through a variety of ways, can let parents know about the expectations being different. Obviously, back-to-school nights, we have parent newsletters, we do our, through our Title I elementary schools, we do our Partners, Parents as Partners as Education, and those can certainly be a part of the agenda to talk about how the expectations have changed. Because it is very different, as you can see in the example there. And one of the things that we learned this past school year in some of the data is if we simply rely on that lower-level instructional about, you know, recall and memorization, our students are not going to perform well. It is about critical thinking skills, it's about reasoning, it's about analyzing, and it's an important piece for things, for our families to be able to support at home as they're looking at some of the work that comes home and being able to have a conversation with that. Our Benchmark Advance has a, for lack of a better word, a newsletter that goes home that explains what lessons students are working on. So that is able to be sent home and was sent home to many families in looking at what is the expectations to our new high-quality resource, Benchmark Advance. And so those are all things that I think can get the message out for looking at the higher expectations that the assessments are.
Also, with reading being so central, do we know how many Manassas City, do we know if there's a problem with books being in homes for our students?
I don't know the answer to that question in terms of books, but we do. You know, one of the things that I will say that we have done to be able to get books in the hands of our students, we have Manassas Reads. One of the unintended consequences of, as Ms. Stevens mentioned, we had to discontinue our use of Scholastic resource that we had. And so we had a multiple-year contract that had already been signed with them. And so if you attended last year's Manassas Reads, we handed out brand-new books. We handed out bilingual books, we handed out high-quality books, and those were provided from Scholastic to fulfill their contract to us. And so that was for two years. And so we have a whole other set of books that'll be coming again to get in the hands of our students that are high-quality, because it is important that they have those materials at home.
And I know each school now, they have their testing data. Does each school come up with a plan of how they're going to improve their test scores?
Yes.
All right. If you recall back in the earlier presentation when Ms. Loesch was talking about at the leadership retreat, she mentioned continuous improvement planning. Yes, each school develops a continuous school improvement plan, and we partner, the first step is to do a needs, a comprehensive needs assessment that looks at all of the data, not just SOL data, because that's only one piece of data, and determine where they need to improve, and then they develop goals, strategies, and actions in line with that. And our process is in line with the state's improvement planning process. So each principal with their leadership team in their building builds those plans each year based on their SOL and lots of other data.
And I'll just add to that, Dr. Jones, on our work session on the twenty-fifth, we are going to be discussing what we want to see from school presentations. So if there's something specific, it's a good thing to think about now. Ms. Miles?
I have a few questions. I know on the one slide for looking forward towards the school year, we talked about attendance protocols that are being implemented at Osborne. Could you go into a little more detail, just for those who are listening, about that?
Sure. I think there's, they refined some of the attendance protocols from last year to build on those. One of the things, I'd say there's a couple of things that specifically that they're doing. One is greater accountability for tardies. Students who are tardy to class, there's greater accountability for that in the building. They've also looked at their, analyzed their data and looked at the number of days absent of our athletes and leveraging that to get students in school. They're also looking at the number of students that, and analyze the data for students who drive to school and seeing how that impacts and enforcing policies around that privilege. And so those are a couple of things that they're really focused in on to try to leverage those things that students are engaged on to get them into school.
Okay, great. The other thing is, I know we've talked about some at K-12, but I had a couple of questions about it. Is it an optional program, or is it something that is required of certain levels, ESAL levels?
Yeah, so students are selected based on what we feel would be the best, they'd be most successful in there. We have at several of the schools that we're doing it, it's a combination of during the school day and after school at, or it's just after school at some schools. So it's a combination of both. We find that it's harder sometimes to get students to the after-school or before-school program, so we want to make sure that we're getting the right students there and getting them to be able to take advantage of those programs. And so in some places, for example, the high school that we're doing it, it's going to be happening during the school day.
Okay, great. And it's not, it's like an elective for them, or?
It's not an elective. It's a situation where we identify the student we think would benefit from this program, and so we're going to identify them and then enroll them into our program.
Okay, great. I have some other questions, and obviously, some of the data that we saw in math, just with seventh and eighth grade, is just not, it's not something we like to see, you know, twenty percent passing or thirty-two percent passing for seventh and eighth grade math. When we look at that, though, because I know you talked about how those who took higher-level math courses, they did excellent, right? Whereas the ones that were taking the just grade level, obviously, the scores are different. Is there any way we could get a breakdown of the numbers in correlation with that? Like, how many kids are taking these higher-level classes as opposed to just the grade level?
Yes. Yes, we can give you that breakdown.
Thank you. And then in addition to that, I would like to know the Virginia pass rates for seventh grade math and eighth grade math. Just like, you know, what are the differences? I saw the decrease and increase and all of that. But it would be nice to see apples and oranges, you know, just like side by side to see where we kind of fall in that. Is this an issue across, you know, Virginia where math, you know, is just really tough at this age, or is it just something that we're really struggling with? So I just would like to see that.
Yes, we can get that. I just want to take the opportunity to explain that middle school mathematics nationwide and statewide, what students take which math tests at which grade levels, when acceleration starts, varies, division to division, right? So some schools have students who are in advanced math skip a fifth-grade test. Some of our students skip the sixth-grade test, sometimes it's seventh, and sometimes it's not till eighth. So actually, I was at the middle school last week, and we had this same conversation, and so we're going to be doing an analysis which we can share with the board, which would go into at the state level as well as locally, how many, not only what the pass rates are, but how many students statewide are taking things at which level. And then, because that context is really important, because our students in seventh grade, because we have students taking algebra and eighth-grade math in seventh grade, you have, you're already pulling the most advanced students, but sometimes that happens in different grade levels. So seventh-grade math scores in many places don't have some of those students, the acceleration, anyway. It's complex, but it's ironically something I was discussing with the middle school leadership team last week, and we're working on that analysis, and we will provide it to the board.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you. And a couple more questions, and I'm not sure who would be able to answer this, but I think about just students in general, as a teacher myself, and when I come, you know, when you have a classroom of students and you're noticing that they have some academic concerns, and these are things that are, you know, like, keep happening. Like, maybe they're struggling reader, and, you know, they should be here, but they're not here. What is the process, and I'm not sure if we ever detailed that, the process that we go about identifying these academic concerns? Are we meeting weekly about, because I know you talked about name and need, but are we meeting weekly? Are we meeting bi-weekly? Like, what is the process of that?
Yeah, so the process at the school level is primarily through our CLT meetings, where they designate time to look at data and look at assessments and analyze assessment data. We give frequent formative assessments, and then we take the time to analyze those and then use that information to develop groups of students to provide that intervention to, specifically what they need. We have students that, teachers who will take a group of students that need a specific skill, and that may not be their primary homeroom teacher. But we do that on a regular basis. The other thing that we are going to be expanding this year is our data dialogues at the division level on a quarterly basis. We'll be looking at our data across the division. We started that last year, but we're going to be more intentional about it this year, looking at all of our data, K-12, on a quarterly basis and trying to make decisions and trying to adjust and provide more support where needed. But that's primarily the way it happens, and there's really two things that, two things happen at the same time at the school level and then now at the division level.
Okay. And I guess I'm really specifically speaking about students who need Tier Three instruction, not the Tier One, you know, but Tier Three, just that they're not falling through the cracks, you know, and making sure they're getting the help they need, whether that is extra instruction outside of the classroom. Yeah, so that's kind of what I was kind of focusing on. Thank you.
Questions to my left. Ms. Brown?
I'm not going to ask any questions, but I do have some questions for the leaders here to ponder. And I'm going to start with me, because I always believe that it's a mindset, and it starts with me. As an instructional leader, my early career, I used to be very proud that I could run circles around reading instruction, science. And later on in my career, when I became an instructional specialist for preschool, I became well-versed in the class reliability tool, and I can go in a classroom, and I was a wisdom body. But I do remember two times- But I do remember two times in my career where I didn't feel as comfortable. And the principal and I had a conversation, and she asked me two very important questions. What might you need to prioritize your role as an instruction, as an instructional leader in math? And then, the other issue that I had at one point was VAP, because our scores were very low, and that's the test for students with disabilities, the alternative assessment. And I went home to think about it very thoroughly. And then she said, if the answer was yes for me, what might you propose as a proactive measure? What would you try? What would you and the teachers try? And my answer was outside of the box for VAP. I tracked down a retired teacher that got 100% on VAPs for year after year, and I told my principal, if the answer is yes, I want to contract that teacher so that she can come teach me how to unpack the standards, how to do it, how to do audits with my teachers. And that's exactly what she did. So she contracted that teacher, and our scores went from 30% to 100% that year, just alone in VAP. Now, that didn't raise the scores for the whole school, because we were doing great, but it raised the success for those families and how they felt about the instruction their children were receiving. And that was important to me, because as an instructional leader, even if 1% of students do not pass, that is 1% of students who are not experiencing success from us. And the other thing for math at that point, I just asked if I could attend some sessions with the math, there was a math academy for math coaches, it was not for assistant principals, but I beg and plead it, and I say, I want to do that, because if, I want to know what they know so that I can bring it back to the classroom. And so I'm just putting this out there for the principals, assistant principals, and coaches, and leaders in our district. What might you propose as a proactive measure? And if the answer from this board was yes, why would you try? Why would you tell us to support you in? I want to hear that, because if it's feasible and we can do it, we want to try it.
Ms. Presja.
Thank you. So this is probably the most important presentation we do all year, is the student outcome presentation. And this is data, but we can't lose sight of the fact that behind each data point is a child whose future is impacted by what we do next. And it's urgent, important work. And I like the invitation you extended there, Member Brown. I will say that, from my perspective, this job has gotten a little bit harder to do over time, because when I started on this school board, the data points were just data points, and now I've been involved in this school division longer, and there are names and faces and relationships. But we can't lose sight of the fact that we have kids' futures in our hands, so some of my questions are maybe going to be a little bit difficult, but it's the way a good personal trainer will encourage you. Five more reps. Don't get out of that low squat hold. You can do it, right? Like, it might be difficult, but we've done hard things before, and I know we can do it again, so... These are my notes, by the way. So I want to ask, first of all, for some clarity, for us to talk a little bit more about our reading results. Because the changes that, you know, the challenges that you outlined at the beginning of the presentation with the VLA and the Canvas course, all that kind of stuff, that did not impact all grade levels equally. Some grade levels were more impacted.
That is correct. All grade levels had new standards, but that did not impact, I would say, the least impact that there was would have been at the high school level.
So knowing that, I see that there was not, there was still not a lot of growth at our high school level. So can we offer an explanation as to why that might be?
So I think that we need to look at alignment of lessons to the new standards would be the first place I would go, place, first place that we are going. We had, just today, I'll give you an example, today, Mr. Emel and Ms. Winham did walkthroughs of our English classes over at the high school. And we're developing a plan to support what's happening in those classrooms, and making sure that there's a true partnership between our general education teachers and our English-language teachers as well. And so I think that's the first place you have to go and look, is alignment, to look at standards. I think you have to look at, are the assessments that we're giving in those classrooms aligned with the standards? And so those are the places that I would look, and based on previous experience, I would say that that's where we will need to make some adjustments.
You mentioned L students, and so this is a good time just to clarify this, because last time, we got a presentation about the changing framework and the new timeline for when L students count for the purposes of accreditation, what used to be called accreditation. But there has been no change.
No, there's no change from last year to this year in terms of who's defined and anything. This does not have those types of adjustments.
Right. So I don't want anyone confused about that. So I want to talk a little bit about our demographic breakdown. For both reading and mathematics, students with disabilities was the area where we lagged the most via the state average. And this is a hard one, because I have two special ed students who thrive in Manassas City public schools, and I am, and I know our special ed teams, and I know that there's a lot of people doing very good and dedicated work. And so I want to hear a little bit more, so I know it's not the people who are doing, you know, I know, I know that there is something more happening here. So what are we doing to support our instructors of students with disabilities?
Yeah, so I want to highlight a few things, particularly that we've done for our special education students. I want to first start off by saying that we started this year in a much better place than we ever have in terms of our staffing. We were, started this school year almost fully staffed in special education teachers. We thought we were, and then we had a teacher that changed her mind, and so I think that is our reality. We were excited about that, because last year, we had, we had a lot of changes in special education, and we had to fill a lot of gaps. And we did not start the year anywhere near fully staffed for special education. So that's one thing I will say. You saw at the end of Ms. Loesch's presentation, we changed, the special education coaches are now part of our professional learning team, where they're integrated with our professional growth specialists and providing support to our special education teachers. And the reason we did that was to try to be more proactive. I felt like we have been reactive. We've been to be reactive because of our staffing situation. And so that compounded that. I would also say that we have spent a considerable amount of time this year supporting schools with scheduling, looking and making sure that special education teachers are able to be part of, an important part of our CLT meetings. When we don't have, we didn't have staffing a year ago, it was hard, we were, teachers were doing double duty and covering multiple, you know, providing services to kids, and were not able to fully participate in that. So we were having a hard time doing that. And so that CLT process and having them be an opportunity, we call it opportunity agent, an actual role in those processes, where they're actually talking about specific things that are working, that need to be done in terms of supports for our special education students. The other thing that I would say is, is just looking at how they have been involved with working with our reading specialists, our math specialists, particularly working, having our special education teachers that are supporting language development of our students, being a part of writing the plans for the writing of the reading plans that we have for our students. That is something that we have been more intentional about this year. And, and so I think that with those things, along with Mr. Masiac reorganizing how we are supporting individual schools and assigning support, trying to make some shifts in that and relooking at how we are overall supporting teachers across the division, because we also recognize that many of our special education teachers are still working towards their license. And so we want to make sure that they are making progress on their licensure, but also that they are getting the tools that they need to be successful with having students in front of them and, you know, trying to provide micro PDs, for example. How do you write IEPs? And try into writing effective goals. Those are all things that we've had to, as our workforce has changed, look at how we are adjusting to supporting the teachers that are, that we're hiring, because some of them are career switchers, for example. And so how do you write an IEP goal? We're now supporting them with that. And so I'd say those are some of the things that we're doing, and I think we're in a much better place than we were a year ago.
That was a long list, so thank you for the long list. Long list is encouraging. This is something I think that, as we have, maybe at a future work session, we can discuss what kind of presentation we might want to see to go a little bit deeper into this, what other options might be available to us to explore that more deeply, because we cannot, can't leave any students behind. So question going to slide nine. I wanted to look at this one, because it's got all that nice green on it. It had a better year than reading. Can you go a little bit, explain a little bit? So math got new standards as well, reading got new standards, and yet, all green and less green. So can we talk a little bit more about the differences there?
Sure. I'll start off, and if I miss anything, this is going to see how well I can paraphrase what Mr. Gifeller said before, and based on my knowledge. So yes, the standards and assessments in both reading and mathematics changed in 24-25. In language arts, as we mentioned, the implementation of the Virginia literacy, it was more dramatic, right? Because not only did the standards become more rigorous, not only did the assessments become more rigorous, our teachers were faced with completely new instructional materials that, as you heard, didn't, we didn't know about until way, way close to when it was happening. There was intensive professional development mandated by the state in terms of courses and modules and things that had to be completed all year. And so it was a more dramatic change in approach. And so I think those are some of the fundamental differences. The math data, it's so exciting to look at all of the green, that's really, really exciting. And I think because of the groundwork that had been laid for the previous two years with the CLTs and stuff in math, that because the resources and the unpacking, it wasn't completely upended, and now you have to teach with new materials and with different pacing, I think that's, that's my analytical reason as to why that happened. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so math, the resources curriculum stayed the same, reading, everything changed all at once. And so this is, and also the tests got harder, 30 to 40% harder, so...
And the tests got harder in mathematics as well, so these gains are even that much more exciting, and you look compared to the state where they had some gains. Every place, they had a gain above two points, so did we, and we had many that they did not have, so...
So I am excited to see what this year brings, because we have, for better or worse, it's, you know, a lot of it's the same from last year. Which, by the way, Ms. Miles, you had asked about the grade seven, grade eight, yeah, so it's right there on the...
Yeah, but I'm talking about the...
The breakdown.
Yep. Yes, and we're working on that, and we will get that to you.
So you briefly addressed this, you kind of touched on it earlier, but didn't quite get to the answer of, are we on track to meet the 80% goal that we set in our strategic plan?
So because the goalposts moved, right, and because the standards changed and the rigor changed and the, it's kind of resetting, and so the short answer is, I don't, I don't know. I know that's not like the best answer, but the progress is encouraging in mathematics. And so if we get to 80%, that's exciting. If you see another five-point gain in 25-26, you're at 62 in mathematics, and it could be higher than that, because if seventh and eighth grade come up, those things go even higher. You see the double digits, so it's exciting. In, in reading, there's challenges there as well, but what I would say is, that goal remains our goal. And so everything our leaders and our teachers are doing is in support of getting all students, right? The goal is really to get all students to where they need to be, but we had to set something that was conceptually attainable. Because of all of the changes, that's still where we want to go. It's hard to say and put a number on where I expect us to end up exactly, because every year, something changes. And so the standards aren't changing this year, but every year, the state changes something. And so as long as there's forward momentum, that's the most important, and you want to see, I'd like to see next year, this kind of green on the reading slide, right? That's what you want to see next, and you want to continue to see the green.
Green everywhere.
So green everywhere is, of course, the goal. So it's hard to say, well, there will hit 80, but if we don't hit 80, but we've made continuous improvement for the three years, the two years getting up to that, I call that a win.
If I could just add, Ms. Presja, we also know that the state right now is considering a change in cut scores.
Right.
And so if you look at raising the cut score from a passing score on the SOL of a 400 to a passing score next year potentially being a, it gets a 444, I can't, I can't remember what the grade level, I can't remember, but that could change. And so we just, there's unknowns.
Yes. There, yes, always unknowns. All right. Well, we're revisiting the plan soon anyway, so we can bake all that into the next pie. So going to slide 10, I just want to point something out. For our L students, we are right at the state average this year. And this is something where, you know, our L students, I have a feeling we're going to be talking a lot more about our L students as the, you know, state accountability framework has changed. The number is still low, that number needs to go up, but that's a kind of a highlight I wanted to hit, like, our L students have hit, you know, they're not lagging the state average, they did it. So we can do better, we can do more, but we are at current state performance. So I wanted to ask you, Dr. Casada, moving on to the next topic, why were more students taking the biology exam? And the reading exam?
Okay, so it was biology and Algebra I. And so, so biology is the course that's the required part for accountability, right? And so, oh, that sounded like it was coming out of the microphone, sorry. So if I look confused, that's why, people on TV. So we have multiple options for students in ninth, 10th, whatever grade for science, right? So earth science is another option. But more students were enrolling in and thus taking the biology assessment, and so that's an encouraging sign, because it sets them up on the path to take a variety, like chemistry, physics, those other courses. So that's one reason, the high school making scheduling decisions with that in mind for the students. For Algebra I, you heard in Mr. Gifeller's quoting of Dr. Chapman about courses in that, for students who had failed the Algebra test, and then had better support with this Algebra Functions and Data Analysis class, which was a way to get students with those foundational skills so that they can take that test. So you saw those kind of bumps. You don't, I don't anticipate you're going to see a bump in the number of students again that same way. We saw a bump in the number of students in reading the year prior, when we made some changes to when that test was given, is one reason for that. And so that's kind of a rambling answer, but...
You know, I forgot to ask you, under the, my previous question about our 80% target, VAS, what do we, we used to have a PALS target, what's our VAS target now?
So, so the target for early literacy did not mention PALS, it said early literacy benchmarks. And so it was also an 80%. And so when I combined, right, the low and moderate risk at the, when I, on each of the school slides, that was to get what that is. So our schools are around, most of the schools were in the 60s and even low 70s already, so I think those targets are very attainable in the early literacy area, and those were K-2 altogether. So I did not split out just two tonight, but that is something that I believe is still a very reasonable target for us.
Gotcha. And when students are eligible for retake, and they take a retake, that is reflected in these charts?
Yes, a school's highest, a student's highest score is what's included, right? So if a student fails the test and then passes the test, they count in here as a pass.
But for N of course, it's a little bit different, because you can take that many, many times.
Yes, but in a given year, so N of course, this is, again, one of those ones, we could go on for a long time, but I will try not to. At the high school level, because students do have more opportunities to take a retake, because many of these tests are requirements for their graduation, again, in a given year's administration and a given year's reporting, only their highest score then will be included, right? So even if a student took the test multiple times, they're in, in the data that you're seeing once.
Gotcha. So going to the, you know, Mets seventh and eighth math results, as Ms. Miles stated, it's not, it's not what we want to see, and it's not what our students are capable of. And I know it's not what our instructors are capable of. I know we can do, you know, five more reps on this one. Like, I know we can do better on this one. So I want to be constructive. And I'm just curious, you're taking the grade seven exam, you could be, and if you are in Mets middle school taking the grade seventh exam, you are... You could be, and if you are in Mets middle school, taking the grade seventh exam, you are most likely a seventh grader.
You are a seventh grader.
You are a seventh grader.
I, I looked at that, yeah, yes.
Yes, because that funny business with sixth graders taking the seventh grade exam, that, you would, those scores would be reflected.
Right, so if those student, right, the sixth, the seventh graders, the, the sixth graders taking the seventh grade test, those scores are reflected at their school where they took the test. So, in Baldwin and Mayfield numbers, it met seventh graders who haven't done that already, take the seventh grade test. Again, some of them take the eighth grade test and some of them even take the algebra test. You take the test for the course in which you're being instructed.
But if you're taking the seventh grade math exam, you are in the seventh grade.
Yes, at Mets middle school.
At Mets middle school. So, the question I have is, do we know how many of our seventh graders received a passing grade in their class?
So, I can get you that information as part of, again, that's another one of the things, a deeper analysis of course, course and SOL performance. And so, yes, that's on the list of things to be getting for you.
Because in terms of, I'm going to guess it was more than twenty percent of kids who received a passing grade in their seventh grade math exam. So, I am, in terms of what we as the board can be doing to be supporting student learning and to be supporting our instructors who are in the trenches trying to make it happen, I think perhaps another conversation about how our grading might be lining up with our academic expectations might be soon in order. All right, and so now, oh. I guess this is the Mr. Gaffeler time for the, I think you can sit down, Dr. Casada. I think I'm done with you.
I'll be back.
All right, so I wanted to ask you for changes for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'm going to press you a little bit. I did go back and look, you know, while we're still on the topic of Mets, at some of the, you know, changes and improvements that have been suggested and made for Mets over the past several years. Because Mets has been in this tough position for quite a while now. And refinements to Mustang block has been in some way, shape or form on the list for three years at least. So, what about this is different?
Well, I think that the focus at Mets is on teaching with clarity. And so, it's really, when you think about the refinement, it's not throwing things out. It's taking that Mustang block and looking at the, to make sure that the interventions that are set to be delivered to the students are actually being delivered. And so, making sure that there's increased monitoring of that. Making sure that, that students are appropriately receiving the appropriate intervention and making sure that students are actively engaged in that Mustang block so that they can get what they need in order to make, to be remediated, to be re-taught, whatever that student might need.
So, kind of going, moving into now the division response. So, looking at our pass rates by school, the results are actually very uneven because there are some superstar performers like wow Weems math. I think the Weems team went to bed, but. Oh, no, there you are. Okay, there you are. But, you know, there are some really eye-popping, huge, beautiful green numbers in there. But there are some out, but there, we do have two outliers that are consistently in the other direction. That's Mets and Round. I haven't talked much yet about Round. But when I look at something like this, and obviously that impacts the overall division data. When you have outliers, that gets into the average. And so, you end up in a situation where your pass rate is not as, where the division numbers overall get kind of suppressed. But, which is fine because everyone's part of this family and we own all of our results. But I'm concluding that, when I'm trying to draw a conclusion here in terms of how we are approaching this issue strategic, you know, our future strategically, you know, you want to look at, is it the plan that needs an adjustment? Or is it the, you know, or is it something going on that is fairly isolated that can be addressed at the building level? So, I'm looking at this and concluding that there are specific issues in those buildings, that it's more building issue and less plan issue. Is that a fair conclusion?
I believe so. I think that, as I said in, in, in the presentation, I believe that the, the issue is looking at making sure that we have consistent implementation of our plan at all grade levels, content teams in all schools. And so, when you think about that, the way I think about it in terms of alignment, making sure that there is alignment with the schools, with our initiatives and our plan that's happening. And that, that, that there is monitoring that's happening in those, in those buildings, in those classrooms, making sure that there is the things that are, as I said, happening and being planted in CLT meetings and that's transferring over to what's happening in the classroom. If we're preparing high-quality lessons in CLT meetings, but then they're not being delivered in the classrooms, that's an issue. And so, then it's up to us to figure out if it's an issue. Is it an issue of we're just not doing it? Or is it an issue of we need support? And so, we want to be able to provide the right amount of support for what's happening in our classrooms and, and supporting our teachers. And so, I, I think that you have to have alignment all the way through the division. So, when you see, you know, when you see inconsistencies across the division, the first thing I look at is, okay, well, what's happening here is not happening here.
Right.
And I think that's important to, number one, recognize it. And then, number two, how do we address it? And as I said in, in the presentation, I think each school has its own story. Each school has unique needs. And so, we need to make sure that we are providing the right resource. When you think about, you know, if you have a cold, antibiotic's not going to help you. But if you have strep throat, antibiotics are going to help you. So, a one-size-fits-all approach is not going to be effective. And so, that's why we try to differentiate. When you think about Mets, for example, we know that we have a lot of, of new teachers there. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a second instructional facilitator that's dedicated to supporting our teachers. We knew that we had special education last year was, in supporting our teachers there, was important. So, we have a designated person that is, that is supporting our special education teachers there on the ground, giving them what they need to support them. And so, I think that's how we're approaching it. When we see a need, we're trying to make sure that the resource and the support matches the need. Because if we have a need for special education and we're giving more ESOL teachers, that's not going to support that.
Right. So, I mean, from my perspective, if the strategic priorities were a problem, they would be a problem everywhere, right? Like, you're not going to get, you know, twenty percent, you know, twenty-four percent gains or whatever if a cycle that works was not working. Like, for example, just to pick out one of them. So, I am, I'm on board with that. I wanted to ask you, our fastest improving schools are, the schools who are in the improving bucket, what do they have in common, if anything?
Well, I think they have a lot in common. One, I think that there is close alignment, as I talked about. I think that, I would answer that question, and there's many things I would say about that. I'll limit, I think that you think about fast, fast improving, performing schools. They have trusted the process. They have trusted the resources. They have high trust within their teams. They have discourse in their teams about students and what's the best way to teach something to our students. I think they have high expectations for our students. They don't accept, they don't accept anything but a student's best and not saying that others don't. But when I think about what makes the biggest difference, and I think that you have very involved teams that are really struggling with and wrestling with how best to move a student forward. I think that's, that is important. I think they, they have, they have let, tried to let go of practices that are not effective. I think when you hold on to a, a practice, when you're thinking about the Literacy Act, it requires, as I said, a, a shift in thinking, a shift in mindset, a shift in practices. And if we're trying to teach new standards in a, but using our old methods, it's not going to yield us the results.
So, when we do see schools that are making lots of good positive change, how do we, how are we ensuring that that change is sustainable and that the momentum is carrying forward?
So, we stay focused. You know, when, and I think it comes down to, you know, as Ms. Brown was talking about, our leaders. We rely on our leaders to keep the school focused and making sure that momentum happens. Being, you know, making sure that teachers have what they need. You know, we want to reinforce high expectations, but we also want to reinforce high support for our students and for our teachers. And so, when I think about how we're reinforcing and keeping the momentum, it's, I, it's a lot, in my experience, it's easier to go from thirty to sixty. It's harder to go from sixty to sixty-five because you've got to maintain that. But it's really easy to go to from sixty-five to thirty. And so, you have to maintain that momentum. And I think that's number one. Staff in buildings need to know what the data shows. They need to respond quickly to that data. They need to advocate for resources and support when needed. And they need to keep the main thing, the main thing, which is instruction and student outcomes.
So, for my, what I think is my last question. I'm curious to hear just about some, I'm curious to hear some reflection generally about what this past school year has taught us. And I don't mean in a way that like, you know, this is the checklist for Mets and this is the checklist for our cycle that works and this is the checklist for this, that, or that. I mean, you know, the system is all of us. You know, as Ms. Brown, you were saying, and you're, each of us are part of this system. Each of us are accountable to the system. So, moving away from the checklist and turning into, you know, what is our senior leadership reflecting on and learning from this past school year and bringing forward?
So, again, I'd have many thoughts on that if I had more time to think about it. But first thing comes to mind is change is not easy. We had to adapt very quickly. And I think that we did a really good job trying to adapt to that, the changes with VLA, for example. Something that I think, as we mentioned as well in the presentation, is that we have to approach the new standards in a new way. We cannot rely on memorization, recall, low, lower-level questioning strategies. That's not going to help our students learn. We have to focus and we have to focus on teaching critical thinking skills. We have to focus on reading and writing. When I think about reading, reading doesn't just impact the reading SOL. And so, one thing I have learned, when you look at our data and when you look at our SOL tests, reading is a, unlocks the keys to other contents. When you look at science, science is also a reading test. Math is a reading test. Social studies is a reading test. And, and we need to make sure that our kids are making progress in reading because that unlocks a lot of doors for our students, particularly on the SOL tests.
I, thank you for that. I encourage all of us to reflect on it. I don't want us to be a finger-pointing division. I want us to be a hand-holding division. You know, we're all doing this together. All of our students are our students. So, thank you for taking all of this time. Thank you, Dr. Casada. And thank you, everybody, for what you are doing every single day and what you're going to get up really early to do again tomorrow. Sorry, guys, such a late presentation.
Vice Chair Spall.
Yes, I'll try to be brief. I do believe we're a team. And I love to use the word "we" in some of our professional development. We've been taught to use I-statements. So, I just want to say that I believe our claim to fame is going to be our mantra by name and by need. And we are going to make it and we are going to implement it with fidelity. I have full faith in our principals and their teams and their schools. And we are proving that we can do it. And it may not be exactly the way we want it to happen, but it is happening. And I am very proud of all of us. Thank you.
Well said, Vice Chair. And thank you. Thank you for that very detailed and thorough presentation and for answering all our questions. If we think of some more, we'll send them in.
Okay. Before we move along to board members' comments, I would like to acknowledge Councilman Tom Osina, who has ventured into the meeting to say hello and to cheer us on, so. Thank you for being here. All right, I will go to board members' comments now. Ms. Breeden, well, student representative to the school board. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First, I would like to recognize one of my closest friends, Haley Cortez, who was recognized in the Hispanic Heritage Proclamation last night at the city council meeting. Hispanic Heritage Month takes place from September fifteenth to October fifteen. And I could not think of a better person to be recognized than her. To name a few, she is involved in Marching Band Skills USA Student Council. She's the president of National Honor Society. And she is a community volunteer, a big sister and a great friend to me and many others. Just congratulations to her and I'm really proud of her. And then additionally, I would like to shout out all the counselors at Osborne High School because they have a lot of responsibilities at the beginning of the year between schedule changes, getting freshmen acclimated and guiding us seniors. They do a great job at pleasing everybody and the hard work truly does not get the recognition it deserves. And lastly, I would, I find myself gratified after every school board meeting because I get the opportunity to learn about all that goes into our school system. Thank you to all that are the faces in front of our students, the recruitment and retention team, the advocates, as well as the data, data analyzers and executors. Thank you for, everyone, for all you do to make Manassas City Public Schools great. Our future looks promising. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Mr. Emun.
Okay, okay. Sorry. I'll just be like this. So, first, I just wanted to thank everybody, you know, for coming. Thank you, Ms., Dr. Casada and Mr. Gaffeler for that very thorough presentation. I just, I didn't really have, you know, a lot of question, most of them, they answered all of the questions I had. I liked the way at the end, when you guys, instead of looking at it as a statistic, you guys saw them more as students. You guys showed a lot of empathy in that. I like that. I just like the thought of trying to focus, instead of focusing on the consequences of absenteeism, we should try to focus on, you know, the benefits and the rewards that attendance brings. And I thought you guys showed that really well in your presentation. You know, there's a football game on Thursday. If you guys want to come, you, I don't know how much it is, probably seven dollars or so. It's, it's Western? Dress Western, guys, yeah. Put a, put a cowboy hat or something. To end off, everyone here, you know, coming here, it shows that you guys have a great passion, you know, for our students and our schools. And I really want to thank everyone for that. And I also want to remind everybody that your goals are also as important as, you know, all the students that you're trying to help. I just wanted everyone to know, and no matter, you know, where you are right now, no matter what slump, no matter how bad you're feeling, I just want you guys to know, you can achieve any goals you guys have, just like you're trying to help all our students in our school system. So, I just wanted, to end off, I just want to share a quick quote from, from a fellow Virginian artist, Netz Bend. Once, he once said, "Build from the floor so you can take off the ceiling." Thank you, everyone, for coming to the meeting again. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Emun. Isn't that just lovely to hear? Thank you both. Mrs. Stevens.
Thank you. Following student representatives is a hard act to follow. So, first of all, administrators, building administrators, thank you for being here. It's eight twenty-eight. I'm sure you're all thinking about what time you have to go to bed tonight and how much sleep you're going to get before you have to turn around and do it all again. So, thank you very much for being here and for all of the hard work you do. Because many people don't see that when you're a principal, you're an assistant principal, you are that person twenty-four hours a day, no matter what you do, no matter where you go. And that when we talk about these numbers and we talk about SOL pass rates, we're talking about your children. And I know you feel very personally about what you do and you take it all to heart. So, I want to let you know, we really appreciate you and everything that you're doing and the hard work you do every single day to get up and get out the door and to be that bright face for all the students when they walk in the building. So, really, thank you for all you do. I know we're moving in the direction. We have some things, we have a ways to go, but we know what we need to do and we know how to get there. So, focus on the end goal and that's the kids successfully walking across the stage as Osborne High School graduates. Thank you.
Ms. Miles.
Oh, wow, that was really quick. I wasn't expecting it to be that. I wanted to talk towards our last presentation. I had some other things I wanted to say. And I just want to make sure, we give a shout out to all the teachers who had a part in our students. our students having their increase in their risk ban, risk bands, because I know how hard that is, to get from, you know, having students, like all your students in high risk, and then having students that are in low risk. So, I need to, as a fellow teacher, shout out to you guys and what you're doing. And also, I know Mr. Goodfeller mentioned all the positive changes that he talked to all the administrators about what kind of stood out in their mind, about what was the reason, was there a special sauce in getting them where they got to? And I wrote, wrote them down, and some of the things that really stood out to me were like high-quality instruction, using that, using the Wida Can Do descriptors, increasing their ESOL teachers, doing number talks, power standards, having more manipulatives, using the Cycle That Works actually was mentioned a few times, team teaching. And I just, I, I, one major thing, and I know this is happening in other districts too, is using the five E model and increasing their STEM on core block from forty minutes to eighty minutes every other day, which I think is awesome for our students, because that's going to prepare them for that SOL. So, I, there's a long list, but collaborative planning and interactive blocks, targeted interventions, increased rigor, which is something that stood out, is so important for our students, no matter what, whether there's a special needs student or ESOL student, just making sure our rigor does not change. And I loved how you're doing the Tier Two boot camps after school for science and intention, being intentional about building the culture of caring, and regular classroom observations for feedback, I think is so essential. So, I just, I wrote all this while you were talking, and I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it before I actually gave my comments. But now for my comments. I wanted to remind all the parents that tomorrow is an early release day. I have to remind myself that my son will be going home early, so wanted to tell parents who, who may forgot about that, look for your dismissal times on your child's school's website. And Thursday, I'm really excited about our town hall meeting. For all those who forgot about it, please don't forget. I know we have the football game, but we also have this town hall meeting that we've been kind of gearing up for. It's going to begin at six o'clock at Mets, and it's going to start with a detailed information session on the following topics, the grading policy, MCPS calendars, communications, and school day start and end times. And these topics were not just picked by us, these were identified after our survey. And after we have the information session, we're going to have a breakout discussion that's going to follow. Where community members who, who come can share their thoughts and ideas during this time and talk to us fellow school board members. Face to face, we'll be manning some of those breakout discussion tables. And then around seven, we're, we're going to open it up for question and answers. And so, I'm just excited about this opportunity. This has been something that I've, I've wanted to do, and I'm just glad it's coming to fruition. And I feel like, you know, it's a chance for us to connect, connect with the community and kind of come off of here and talk to you face to face. You know, we're up here, and, you know, sometimes it's daunting to take time to comment, you know, during the public comments, maybe you're a little scared to do it. But if, if you have a burning question that you want to ask us, that maybe wasn't identified in the survey, bring those questions, because we will be a front and center during that time. I also want to bring some recognition to some of the events that we have going, and ironically enough, a few of these events are, are going to be at Mets, our Parents as Educational Partners, which is going to be every Thursday starting September eighteenth. And I think this is such a great opportunity for you to increase your students' achievement and develop those home and school partnerships. There's going to be free dinner and childcare provided, and it's at six o'clock, and it lasts for eight weeks. So, it's not just a one-week thing, but maybe if you're not able to come September eighteenth, you can always come another time. But I really encourage parents, if you really have lots of questions about how our schools work, and you're not even sure how the American schools work, I really, I really encourage you to participate in that. Weems is actually going to be having a patriotic sing-along in the cafeteria this week at nine fifteen AM. I won't be able to attend, but for all those who are going to be celebrating Patriotic Day on September eleventh, I wanted to mention that. And then the last thing, another opportunity for middle school parents, they have a Middle School Madness series, and it's already in, they've already had two sessions in September. And for all of those of you who have new middle schoolers, you've never had a middle schooler, they're discussing teen development, providing parents with strategies and support for their, for you. And it also gives you kind of like a support system. Maybe you don't have family here, but you can talk about some of the things that your teen, your middle schooler is going through. And doors open at six, and there are two more sessions left, and they actually have childcare if you have an elementary age student. So, that's all I have for today, for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Breja.
All right, well, Ms. Miles covered most of the upcoming events, but I do have a few things to add. First, I want to report out on the Governor's School Joint Board, of which Chair Seberg and I are the liaisons. This, the Joint Board had its first meeting of the school year, where each of the participants in Governor's School take turns rotating who nominates the chair of the Joint Board, and with Chair Seberg's support, I was, I'm the chair this year, so that was exciting. My first, my first meeting doing that. The, and there's not too much to report. It was an extremely routine meeting, just on admissions timelines and things like that. I will, if you are already putting together your May calendar, tell you that there are two dates already set. The Research Symposium is going to be on May first. It's generally in the morning, they didn't give a start time. And the Governor's School graduation ceremony will be May sixteenth at ten AM, and we, Osborne High School, we will be hosting it. So, you can put that, that on your calendar. I encourage everybody to come to the Town Hall on Thursday. There's also the STEPS program tomorrow, which is, I believe, the dinner is at six-thirty, and the programming starts at seven. There's dinner and childcare available. If you want the childcare, you have to register in advance. This is the first of several topics, and I'm very excited. I don't, actually don't know that I'm going to be able to go to the one tomorrow, but I will be checking it out at some point. The STEPS program is a program for, to help families get introduced to the IEP process and special education in general, kind of like PEP, to get folks acclimated to the vocabulary and the little ins and outs. And also, I wanted to highlight that the first CAC meeting will be on September seventeenth at seven PM, right?
We're going to bump out on seven thirty to the one of...
Okay, seven thirty. That one's at seven thirty PM. There's a Zoom option, so get in touch with Mr. Masieck if you'd like the Zoom link. And so, if you're interested in getting more involved with special education and all that good stuff, September seventeenth is the date. That's all I've got.
Dr. Jones.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. Well, I attended the football game on August twenty-eighth, the first game, and it was a close game. But a special note to everyone, the purses are not allowed at Princeville County games. My husband had to walk my purse back to the car, so just for your information. I also encourage you to attend the Town Hall meeting on Thursday, September seventeenth. And then also have the opportunity to stop by Mayfield, Mets, Baldwin Intermediate, Baldwin Elementary, and Weems last week with Dr. Newman and Ms. Goodfeller. So, I'm always happy to see students engaged and to see teachers actively instructing our students, and I look forward to many more visits into the schools this year. I planned to give you a little bit of some highlights on the data, but I decided not to do that. But I will ask our parents and our teachers and all those here to go back and to review the, the data at your leisure. And also, for our parents, you can really help us educate your children. So, when you think about it, why don't you read to your students, your children daily, discuss what you read, and think about those high-level thinking skills. For math, think about how math is used in our daily lives. Have your children play games, count money, and that's something a lot of us, we don't even take money into the store, but give your kids some money, have them count money, have them measure ingredients for recipes, and discuss food prices when you're at the grocery store. Encourage both exploration and questioning. And the most important thing you can do for your students is to have them to go to school every day. So, we please ask that you get them up and on the bus, so that they can go to school. And lastly, for our special ed, not for our special ed, but special thanks to our Manassas City staff for all the work you do to help our students reach their highest potential. And the systems are in place for us to see continuous improvement and learning, so let's continue on the path that we're on, so that we can reach our division goals. And make sure that the, our Town Hall meeting is September eleventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I would like to begin my comments by wishing everybody a happy Hispanic Heritage Month. This is a time to honor a vibrant culture, history, and contributions. Let this month remind us all that our strength lies in the richness of our diversity, resilience, family, and the power of our community. And with that, I would like to invite you all to the Bilingual Storyteller Community, Community Literacy Event that the Education Foundation graciously voted to sponsor and pay for. The events are scheduled for Tuesday, nine sixteen, at Baldwin Elementary, on Wednesday, nine seventeen, at Dean Elementary, and on Thursday, nine eighteen, at Osborne High School. All right. I had some comments prepared about our scores and data, but more to come about that. The only thing I want to say tonight is, thank you to all of those teachers and leaders who showed up. And I want to remind everybody, as we start talking about our data, that behind every test score, there is a student who showed up in a classroom and took that test, and there was a family with hopes and dreams, and there was a teacher giving it their all. So, I, just keep that in mind as we begin the conversations about data. And the most effective next step for us is to strengthen our instructional practices through consistent supervision and coaching. This means ensuring principals and instructional leaders are actively observing classroom instruction, providing meaningful feedback, and supporting teachers with ongoing professional development. I want to end my comments by reiterating two things. One was said by Mr. Goodfeller, and the other one, I just want to, I said it, and I want to reiterate this to all the instructional leaders, what might you need to prioritize your role as an instructional leader? And if the answer is yes, what might you propose as a proactive measure that we can make happen for you? And, Mr. Goodfeller, yes, we are a story of progress and persistence, but that persistence and that progress starts with the growth mindset each one of us is willing to foster. I think we can rise up.
Vice Chair Spall.
Yes, I'm also traveling to Mechanicsburg, fun Mechanicsburg, to, for Legislative Priority Training next week. And I attended a really fun 2020 class reunion at the football game, our first home game last weekend. But I think when we leave here, we're all probably going to start to read things in the newspaper about our SOL scores, so I just wanted to talk very briefly one more time about that. We know this year's SOL scores are not where we want them to be, especially compared to state scores, and we do take that seriously. But they are only one measure of progress, and internally, I'm extremely encouraged by our report tonight. Over the past four years, this board has strengthened early literacy, expanded tutoring, and invested in student conduct supports, and our new alternative education program. These steps are already helping make students, make more students stay on track, graduate, and succeed beyond a test score, with admittedly more rigor and complexity. The growth is slow, but shows that our consistency does work. We will keep building on this work. We will scale what's effective and ensure that every student in Manassas has the tools they need to thrive. And just one last word on outpacing state gains, and a small number, but a significant number of areas is a really big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'll wrap it up with a few announcements that haven't been made. I first want to say, as I was walking into this meeting, really looking forward to this, I really appreciate the opportunity to share our data with the public and to share what our response is. And like Mr. Goodfeller said, context, not excuses. But as I was walking in, I could hear the marching band playing, they're rehearsing over in the field over there, and it's just exciting, and it makes me excited for the game Thursday night that others have already mentioned. This is our September meeting. We did have a later September meeting, which was canceled because of the student holiday or the division holiday. We do have a work session on September twenty-fifth, so check out Board Docs for those topics if you're interested. Several have mentioned the Town Hall. Ms. Brown has mentioned the bilingual storyteller that's coming to three of our schools, and that's a community event, so everyone's invited. Six PM, September sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth at various schools. You'll see it advertised online. Manassas City Public Schools and Osborne High School are hosting another Unified Sports Event. On September twenty-sixth, the student athletes will participate, along with several other schools, in the Rally for the Rail. It's at seven PM on the twenty-sixth. Also, to all our educators in Manassas City Public Schools, the Executive Director of the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation, Carol Hart, sent an email today announcing that their innovative educator grants are opening at ten thirty AM on Monday, September fifteenth. And you have until October thirty-first to submit an application for a grant, if you do have an innovative idea that you would like to implement during the second semester. Thursday, we got the Town Hall. It's going to be a come-as-you-are, because I'm going to the game afterwards, so I might be dressed a little differently, but we hope to see you there. It's, it's, it's really for us to hear from you, but also an opportunity for us to answer on the spot. So, we'd appreciate the input. Thank you all for being here tonight and making this a priority for our community. Appreciate it. Can I just say one more thing? Mrs. Spall has something else.
Sorry. There, there's an alumni raffle that's coming up, and tickets are available, and they do support student scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I move the school board meeting adjourned.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Breja, that the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you.